Everyone have their microphones on?
Callie, are you ready?
Yes ma'am.
It is six o'clock PM on June thirteenth, um, twenty twenty-four. It's, uh, great to have you all here. One of my favorite sayings I heard in a training recently, and I know you're gonna love it, is don't make decisions about us without us. And so, I'm really glad you're here. We invite people out and sometimes we just look at empty chairs and, uh, it feels like, you know, nobody cares, but we know they do. They just have other things they do. So, we're calling this meeting to order with an opening ceremony by Dale Tanner. He's gonna, uh, offer us a prayer and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Did I say Dale?
No, Tanner. Our Father in Heaven, we humbly bow our heads at the beginning of this city council meeting and express our love and gratitude to thee for the chance we have to live in this beautiful community. We are thankful for the city officials, the council, the mayor, and all those who work to act as stewards of this wonderful place. We ask thee to bless us tonight that as these matters are discussed and actions are taken, that they might be righteous, they might be good decisions, and that they might be inclusive of all the citizens who would like to be here and participate tonight. We ask thee to bless us with these blessings and do it humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Dale.
Yes, thank you. All right, and I would like to just excuse our city attorney. He will be here shortly. He's on his way from Salt Lake. He had a sheriff thing and he did not expect the traffic, but I don't expect him to be very late. Um, does the council have any conflicts or personal interest in any of the agenda items?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Okay, and I'd like to offer to the council, um, by decision, our item that is number fourteen, which is the redlined items in the policy and procedure manual. Um, I don't know if anyone else's looks like mine, but mine looks like this. And hearing from the other council members, I don't know that we gave each other enough time to really review those carefully, so I'd like to propose that we move that agenda item to either a special meeting or to the next city council meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Can we, so can we make that adjustment to the agenda as part of the approval process?
You're gonna take it from the work meeting and just...
Yeah, yeah. Cause I mean, I heard from about half the council, they didn't feel like they had time to really get in there and that we needed to really take some time with that. So, do you like that, or do you wanna go ahead and talk about it in this meeting, in the work session?
Sounds good.
I think we need to do it on a separate meeting because we're gonna go through a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Okay, do we have a, do we need to...
Someone can just move the table it?
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Callie. All right, um, this time is now yours for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes and also try to not repeat things others have said. Just come with new ideas if you can, and the time is now yours.
I'm Ron Clayton. I'm Parwin resident. I yield my public speaking time to my spouse, Lorraine.
Lorraine Clayton, resident. Our next door neighbor Brett Carlyle, two fifty-seven South Main Street, set up an industrial woodworking and cabinetry shop in his garage, driveway, and backyard the second week of April. His property is zoned R one A. He downplayed his business operations to my husband and used his health and income status to obtain sympathy from him and the Munfords who live on the south of him. Mr. Carlisle also mentioned he probably needed to get a business license. We have been living with an escalation in activity next door with noise from machinery seven days a week and what we felt was toxic air since the second week of April, and that comes in waves. It's not constant. As the tolerance of disturbance grew thin, our overall concerns of our health, safety, and well-being grew stronger. In our attempt to be understanding neighbors, our neighbor, Mr. Carlyle, seemed unconcerned with the dangers he was placing us in. As someone in the business for twenty years, one must assume the knowledge existed of the dangers of his work. We have experienced no known mitigation or safety measures other than his hiring an electrician to rewire the garage. The city of Parwin became aware of the manufacturing operation in mid-May. It is my understanding the assistant zoning administrator listened as we all had to Mr. Carlyle's sad story of health. I say that with sincere compassion for Mr. Carlyle. I do not know exactly what Keith Naylor did during or following his visit with Mr. Carlyle.
Thank you.
What I do know is the activity next door continued and I became ill. I self-tested for COVID for over a week. I had an extreme headache, breathing issues, shortness of breath, and a cough. After two weeks of these symptoms, I started a course of antibiotics. The antibiotics changed nothing. I felt an unusual shortness, I have felt an unusual shortness of breath since late April. I had not thought to, excuse me, to look at my fitness tracking device, and I did that two days ago. I found a drop in my O-two stats in late April without recovery the entire month of May and until two days ago. We last know of the sprain occurring on Sunday. In the meantime, I took my husband to the ER for the first time in over ten years for an eye issue. That happened three weeks ago. I also learned my aunt, who lives to the south of this home, has been in the ER twice in a week, in the last several weeks. Once for a burning stomach pain, the second for shortness of breath. Is this coincidence? Not according to the research and patterns established by the industry of woodworking and use of chemicals to treat wood. On Monday, June third, the Munfords and Clatons filed a firm complaint with the Parwin City Office outlining our concerns of health, fire safety, and possible code violations, and requesting the city shut the manufacturing business down until further investigation could occur. Our response from the city was dated June sixth and arrived in the mail on June eighth. We were told the city was working with Mr. Carlyle in obtaining a home occupancy permit and a business license, and we would have an opportunity to file an objection as part of the process going forward. Additionally, we were instructed to contact the police dispatch if we observed any violations in regard to nuisances. To put it bluntly, it was a lame response and a dereliction of duties on the part of those who participated in the decision-making process. I learned Monday, one of the major toxins being sprayed next door is lacquer. The toxic substance not only causes health issues, travels in the air, it's heavier than the air, it is highly flammable. The setup next door for air spraying lacquer is a utility cargo trailer provided, or parked in the driveway with no safety measures, and ventilation is accomplished by opening the door while spraying. All of these activities and more have disrupted our lives and that of our neighbors. In an attempt to continue to help Mr. Carlyle, the very kind Lyman Munford brokered a deal on Monday between City Hall himself and Mr. Carlyle so that he could continue partially working at home. We had no prior knowledge of the arrangements and do not agree with what took place. Mr. Munford was not speaking on our behalf. Kudos to Councilman Harris for offering his paint booth to Mr. Carlyle. That certainly helps with the issue. It doesn't solve the problem. I would not have agreed to this arrangement had I been asked. Enabling law-breaking behavior makes no sense. It's okay to break laws if we have a good excuse, if we're ill, if we're low income? I don't think so. A disregard for personal safety is one thing, a disregard for health, safety, and well-being of neighbors and a community is poor judgment and unlawful. Moving forward, I am requesting the city council conduct an autopsy of the process for code enforcement and zoning compliance. A flawed process is in place when a manufacturing business is given the option, excuse me, very dry, to continue doing business and work through the process to obtain a home occupancy permit and a business license after known violations have been identified. Is training needed? Does a protocol need to be in place to use experts? What are the critical questions that need to be asked before suggesting a process only intended to stall enforcement? We will be obtaining soil samples to diagnose and determine if our garden and fruit trees have been impacted. In closing, I want to give a special thank you to councilpersons Downey and Harris. They were prompt in their attention to this issue and on our behalf, and I will email supporting documents to all of you so that you can see the dangers, the health issues of lacquer, of wood dust, and what noise does to people over the age of sixty-five and children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rebecca Rasmussen, a resident. I have a concern about the aerial fireworks being set off in Lyons Park in July. My concern is last year, instead of going into the interior of the park and detonating the aerial fireworks, they, um, set themselves up on the sidewalk facing Canyon Road, specifically the southeast corner by the Visitor Pavilion. I don't know if that's what it's called, but that's what I call it, and detonated the fireworks towards the homes, specifically our home, and the unmaintained lot on the corner below the cemetery. Um, and at one point allowed a child to handle the fireworks, which when the firework detonated, the child panicked and dropped it, and thankfully, it shot in towards the interior of the park and detonated just before at the Lyons Pavilion, not hitting any people. But, um, my request is that possibly the Parwin City Police could patrol and tell people to move into the interior of the park to detonate the aerial fireworks, or on the webpage, you could place, um, some information about people going into the interior of the park where it's safer and they aren't being detonated towards homes or lots full of dry grass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're great suggestions. Appreciate it. All right, and with that, we'll end our public comment section. Um, our next item is item number five. This is the presentation on the statutory officer's compensation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Dan, will that be you? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have never done this, and that's because this is a new requirement from the state legislature this last, um, session. Senate Bill one ninety-one, um, made some amendments to the city municipal code section of state law in, in section ten, and also the county municipal code. Um, doesn't affect, um, the county code doesn't affect us. Um, and so, we won't go into this level of detail, and I only have four slides, just so nobody gets too worried. But I wanna give a little bit of background as to what this new law requires and why we're doing it. This is the section of code that was, um, that was added, and, um, I haven't gone and grabbed the whole, the whole code. It's actually fairly short, but I wanna focus on the things that, um, that we have to do and why and how they're interpreted. It has a lot of room for potentially causing consternation either by the public viewing, employees is making too much, too little, employees viewing each other is making too much or too little, or more or less than them, or something like that. Um, there is information available on the transparency website that the state puts out. It can be misleading, um, and it won't, um, agree with the numbers that I'm gonna show you, and I'll tell you why. The state transparency website shows total compensation that includes anything that is paid on behalf of the employee. That includes workers' comp, that includes taxes, whether it be the employer's portion of the taxes or the employee's portion of the taxes. It includes retirement, includes health insurance, it includes anything that gets paid on behalf of an employee. What we are required to do by this code is we are required to, um, as we adopt our final budget for the upcoming year, if we've done any change in compensation for specific employees, we have to have a public hearing to talk about that change. There is some gray area, some vagueness, that the, that the code really didn't answer a lot of questions. I went to a lot of trainings and heard from different municipals and attorneys, their, their view of what we should do, so I'm trying to make sure that we're as transparent as possible, that we follow not only the letter but the spirit of this, of this law. The, uh, the most important stuff is that I've actually added some emphasis here. Says before a governing body may adopt a final budget or a final amended budget that includes a compensation increase for an executive municipal officer, the governing body shall hold a public hearing on the compensation increase. It doesn't say what we have to tell, it doesn't say that, how to, how to, how to present that information, it doesn't say total salary, it doesn't say hourly, it doesn't say a percentage increase, so I've just tried to give as much information as possible, um, including some information that really it didn't say we had to, but, um, I wanted to make sure that we were thorough. So, what does that mean? Um, this is from the same code, these are definitions. Um, compensation in this case does not include all of the same things that it includes on the transparency website. Specifically, what we are supposed to go over is salary, including salary paid under a contract. And the reason I have underlined that is my first read-through of this is that it wouldn't affect the city attorney because he's just a subcontractor, he's not a city employee. But it later says that's the city attorney, and it specifically says salary including paid under a contract. So, we have him under contract, we don't pay him hourly, he does not get a paycheck, he just gets through accounts payable a check monthly. But specifically, since it says salary paid under a contract, I figured to be safe, we'd include him. Budgeted bonus or budgeted incentive pay. So, if we incentivize any of our employees and with a, if we had a variable, a compensation package or something like that, we would have to disclose that. A vehicle allowance or deferrable salary. That's it. Those are the four things that are included in compensation, that we're supposed to disclose any change to those things. No, sorry, any increase. We can decrease their salary without having a public hearing, but if we're gonna increase it, we have to have that. Compensation increase means, means an increase in any item of compensation listed in above, right? So, the next question is, is who does this apply to? Cause what's it, what is an executive municipal officer, right? This is gonna vary depending on the size, the size of city, but it gives five things that, that we have to cover. One, the city or town manager. That's pretty obvious who that is. The assistant city or town manager, or assistant city or town chief administrative officer. So, we don't have one of those. Um, the city or town attorney. An individual who is the head or chief of a city or town department or division. So, for that reason, I've included the fire chief, who is not a paid employee, he does get a stipend. But I have had that in here because that's a department and he's a chief, right? Have the police chief. I have department heads. Now, there has to be some cutoff point where you say, are they a department head or not? I mean, we have a part-time pool manager. Um, I, I said that probably doesn't fit the criteria of a division or a department head. It's a part-time seasonal position, right? But I did include, um, you know, the parks supervisor, who is a, who is over parks and rec and is a full-time position. You know, more I would say fits this category. And finally, an individual who is the chief assistant of an, or deputy of an individual described in subsection two D, which was right above that. So, I included any deputies, um, and really in the spirit of this, um, somebody who has a deputy in their title or is, is the, in a, specifically in a role that, like our assistant public works director, he's, he, he runs the show when the public works director's gone, and so I included him. So, that's who I included. Um, I, I think that we've, we've fit the, um, the nature of this and, and what it is. If you disagree with me, tell me because we sure didn't get a lot of guidance on this. So, Parwin, executive municipal officer compensation increases. These are, this is not every employee. These are those that I felt fit that criteria. This is in order of last name alphabetically, and I do have copies of this on here. If you go and look and see what it says on the state transparency website and add it up, you'll say, well, that person makes a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Well, they don't have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in gross compensation before taxes come out. That includes everything that the city pays on their behalf, like I said, including taxes that the city pays on their behalf, um, and FICA and Medicare and Medicaid and workers' comp and all kinds of stuff, so. These, um, I put these things in by the nature of what they have. A lot, most of our employees are hourly, so I put their hourly wage. I put, um, in the fiscal year right now, and then I put the ensuing year's budget and the percentage change. Again, I, I, I wanted to be more than thorough and give more information rather than less information. If, it, it looks like, um, the fire chief is getting a forty-eight percent increase. Um, the fire chief is a volunteer position who has typically received money for going on fire runs, like our other volunteers. Um, we're moving to a stipend instead of a, um, variable volunteer, I mean, a variable rate because he has duties that, that are beyond just when he goes on a fire, and that's a four hundred dollar a month stipend. It's not, um, groundbreaking. Um, any additional notes we're here? Um, our city attorney is probably surprised to see this up in front of him. Um, this is a new senate bill. If you had heard my whole presentation, I, I won't go into it again, but we have to disclose consecutive, or executive municipal officer compensation, including contract salary, including the city attorney, so.
So, you had to put mine up there?
Yours is there, yep. Mine's there, everybody's is there. Um, if somebody received zero percent, actually, I wouldn't have had to put them on this, um, public hearing today, but, um, I did not want there to be any sort of rumors as to why somebody was left off and it was some conspiracy. Um, um, our, our new public works superintendent, actually, as part of his hiring, he was just barely hired, um, his COLA was, was built into his offer, um, and so he does not get a COLA as of July first. Myself, I do not get COLAs. I renegotiate my contract with the city on an as-needed basis, um, so that's why I'm zero, but I knew if I left myself off this list, it would be like, what the heck? Um, and the city attorney renegotiates his contract, so. Um, there is a reason why some have a three point nine percent change and others have a four point six percent. There's only a couple that have that four percent, six point six, sorry, four point six, and that is due to the nature of that point zero seven for tier-two employees that we did, um, because they are gonna have, um, money taken out of their paycheck that the others won't. That's the information before the public hearing. I hope it's easy to understand, it's a lot of information, and, um, I guess that's the end of my presentation. I'll just say we do appreciate our employees. Um, I'm sure they don't like having their, their lives splayed open like that, but we are gonna comply with the law. So, that's my presentation.
Dan, could we go to that first slide? Well, the next one. Well, the next one, I guess. Well, where's that? Okay, here. So, when it says that the compensation made, that whole number, or that item be a budgeted bonus or budgeted incentive pay, so COLA has to be listed. That's, that includes COLA, right?
We just have to say what they're gonna make next year.
I know, but COLA, that's part of that.
Yeah, cause we're adjusting their hourly rate.
So, every year, that's gonna, that needs to be...
We're gonna be doing this every year that we do a COLA. If we do no increases at all, we don't have to do this. Any increases to their, their pay, we have to do this.
But COLA is part of that.
Yeah, yeah, COLA for, for the acronym, and we throw these around, cost of living increase, or cost of living adjustment. Um, most employees received a three point nine percent cost of living adjustment this year, which is a fancy way of saying we're adjusting their, their wage due to inflation. Um, whether or not you call that a, a raise or not is, is, um, we can debate, but it is included in this because we're saying what they're making this year and what they're gonna make next year.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just want that clarification.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we are going to open the public hearing, and that is to receive comments regarding the municipal statutory officer's compensation in accordance with UCA ten dash three dash eight one eight.
I'll make a motion to go into public hearing to receive comments regarding the municipal, municipal statutory officer's compensation in accordance with UCA ten dash three dash eight eighteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So, the time is yours. All right, seeing nobody approaching, um, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Hi ma'am, do we close the public hearing, uh, regarding the statutory officer's compensation for fiscal year twenty, twenty-four through twenty-five?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving now into our consent meeting, these are items that are generally administrative in nature and are approved with one motion. We have item six, approval of the city council meeting minutes from April thirtieth, May ninth, May sixteenth, and May twenty-third. Number seven is the approval of the warrant register for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and number eight is the approval of the financial statement for May of twenty twenty-four.
I have a comment regarding the minutes of May ninth, uh, twenty twenty-four. When the vote was taken for the chamber director, uh, for seventy-five hundred dollars, Councilman Harris is listing as voting both nay and aye, and councilperson Downey is no vote. So, I think that needs to be corrected unless there's...
Councilmember Harris contacted me and I've made that change already. Thank you.
Thank you, but I did not...
Did you take mine?
Huh?
Cause I voted no, no on that. Okay.
Okay, it wasn't in the packet, so I, okay. Thank you.
They contacted me after, when they got the packet and saw the error, they contacted me and I fixed it.
Thank you for taking care of that.
If you'd like to see it, I can post it on, up there. Would you like to... If you'd like to see it, I can put it up there for you.
No, Callie, I, I just didn't see it in my packet.
No, I understand that, but if you'd like to see it, I can show you.
No, I just wanna make sure it was taken care of. I'll thank you.
Thank you.
So, a motion to approve our consent meeting, items six, seven, and eight.
I'll make a motion to approve consent meeting, item six, seven, eight.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion carries. All right, our action meeting, item number nine. This is a really fun one, and we have Tony Robison and Principal Bailey here. I don't know if they're both coming up, it'd be great if they did. And this is our Parwin High School Flag Retirement Repository Location, asking for council approval and acceptance.
All right, first, we want to thank, thank you for letting us, Parwin High School, come present in city council today. Um, last November, Parwin High School had the opportunity to be part of experiences that were honoring retired flags that have been collected both from our school and also from our community. Mr. Jim Shirtlift came to our school to teach our student government class with the United States of America. Mr. Jim Shirtlift came to our school to teach our student government class what the United States flag represents, and also how to properly fold our flag. Um, then many of our students and our staff attended a flag retirement ceremony at our Veteran Memorial up on Main that was put on by several of our community veterans. It was humbling, and it was an amazing experience for many, and an experience that we're hoping that we can continue yearly with our school and also our community. Being a proud military mom, I follow several media groups on, um, about the US Army and also airborne. And back in April, I came across a retired flag drop-off box, and I sent the image to Mr. Bailey. And he was determined to get a flag drop-off box for our community, and he has done just that. Him and several others have worked their magic, and they found an old mailbox. They convinced a nice community member to sell us that mailbox, and we've had several veterans and current military members and Perwin High School donate to make this possible purchase, wrap it, and create a flag retirement box for our community. This picture up here that Callie has just displayed is how our retired flag box will look. We will be getting our flag box in the next few weeks. We have visited with several community members about the ideal location for our retired flag box. We were initially considering the Veteran Memorial or the Public Library, but with a lot more thought, we now believe that placing the box at Perwin High School is our best option. The box would be outside of the Commons, facing Main Street, under the awning. The location was chosen for several different reasons. It will keep the donated flags dry. All sides of our drop-off box will be visible. We will ensure security with our existing cameras, and we will be able to provide educational opportunities for our students to learn more about our United States flag. However, this is where the city we would like to involve. We are asking for Perwin City's support to make this project successful and to serve our community effectively. We want to raise awareness about the importance of the proper flag disposal and encourage community participation. We're asking Perwin City to help us promote this flag retirement box through your social media, your social channels, and community events. As a school, we will also be actively promoting this as well. We believe that together, we can ensure that our community, community respects and honors our flag properly and knows where they can bring their retired flag. Do any of you have any suggestions or ideas about our flag retired box?
I think it's a great idea.
I love it. Great idea.
Great idea.
Okay. There will be one, and I'll always continue to empty it. We will store them until we do our flag retirement. It's usually right around Veterans Day. So, good question. Thanks. Any others?
No, I think it's fantastic, and I'm glad you were able to provide us with the image, because it really helps everyone see how really, really, really thoughtful and cool this is.
We did it, I grew up in San Diego, and they did this every year in our elementary school. And they came with full, full dress Marines that did the burning of the flag.
So we had that, so when we did.
Right, I was up there, yeah.
Several veterans in our community that did that. And then our, many of our students and our staff got to go up and observe this, and they all got to carry a flag to the burning. I, it was, it was a really amazing experience.
It was awesome.
So, anything else, Mr. Bailey?
I just had a few thoughts. I mean, if you understand the importance of the flag, it's sacred, and there are people that have sacrificed so much. I think this is a way to bring that to our community and share in that responsibility and teach and educate. It's a great idea, um, and we want to partner, I mean, we've been a partner with you for the last couple of years. We signed an agreement. We, we wanted to disclose that with you, that we appreciate all that you do, Mayor and councilmembers for this community. We wanna be a part of the community, and we wanna give back, and this is a service that we can help provide with your help. So, um, you know, the people that are listed that you can't see very well on the back of that, that have donated are all veterans and, uh, have a long history of, of service in the community and to our nation. And so that will stand as a monument to them as well. And, you know, I appreciate, appreciate Mrs. Robinson for sharing this idea and then allowing us to be a part of that as well, so. Anyway, I just think if you can build the spirit of community through something like this, and it's something that can be done, and maybe, maybe it needs to be broadened, but we'll see. One thing I think that was notable is, last year in our retirement ceremony, that you guys may not be aware, I think we had about two hundred flags. Is that correct? About two hundred flags, and every single one of those flags, we brought into the school, and we had the student body officers help fold those flags, so that they were proper before we took them to the retirement ceremony. And that was a great, great opportunity, and several of the members here of the community were also involved with that. So, it was awesome, and, and we heard lots of great things. So, you know, with that being said, we just wanna say thank you, uh, for allowing us to be a part of what you guys do and, uh, make a difference, right?
And I just wanted to add, um, to thank our staff for collecting those flags. I think it was like two hundred and forty flags, something, but thanks to our city staff who collected those flags, because we didn't have this repository at that time, so that was a great effort by our staff. Um, I don't wanna block you if you wanted to say something. Right?
Yep. That's a great question. So, we're in the process of getting this wrapped right now. They just stripped the paint off of it. They're going to repaint it, and we're hopeful that we can get it in by July first. We just across the road over here at the high school, and you can take your flags over there, and we'll have people there that gather them, and then we'll take care of them with the student body. So, we wanted to get this in by the Fourth of July, and we wanted to get the word out by then, and we think by the July first, that we'll have it installed, so that's a great question.
So where are you going to install it, exactly?
So there's, in the Commons, there's an awning that goes over the Commons area, and we, we determined that would be the best spot, because we have cameras, and also it'll help protect, um, it from the weather, so that the flags will remain dry, and then we'll have our student body, uh, help, you know, fold them and take care of them, and we'll store them.
And that's lighted as well, isn't that area light as well?
It'll be accessible twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four, seven. You just have to walk up. There's a little stairwell, and it'll just be right there by the, by the doors.
You'll be able to see it from the road, too. Like, he'll see it on Main Street. I mean, you'd be able to see it, so.
We're also gonna hang a banner that says something for a little while there, too, until people get used to it.
That's lit, too, isn't it?
Well, thank you very much. If the council doesn't have any other questions or things to say, thoughts, I just need a motion to receive the flag repository and also, um, accept the location as presented. And I guess also agree to help promote through all of our channels. That was another ask we need to be sure we include.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to do the PHS High School Flag Retirement Repository locat- accept the location, and what else did you want accepted?
Um, the, just accept it in general as a city, and then to help get the word out.
Okay, as a city and a community, being in, for the city to help promote that.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you and all you do in our community. All right, so item number ten in the action meeting is Approval of the Final Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five Budget and the Auditor Certified Tax Rate of point zero zero two two four one, and this is by Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four dash zero one.
So, um, just to let everybody know, we, we did have the tentative budget. Um, it was right out of the system. It wasn't a fancy, you know, document, but we now have the final version of the budget, which is a lot more, um, community-friendly to read through. Um, assuming that it, uh, passes tonight, we'll put it on the webpage, and anybody can da- can download it or look at it either from the city's webpage, or we will upload it to the state auditor's webpage as required, and it, and it can be viewed there as well. We did have a public hearing on that last meeting and a presentation on that budget. Um, as far as the auditor certified rate, we did not get that new rate in time to incorporate the revenue, the, the new revenue into the budget. So we, and, and it's, and essentially, we will get a little bit more revenue than we budgeted for from property tax due to new growth, which is fine. That's not, um, it's not particularly, um, even odd for us to be moving ahead of that. We would have to have a special meeting in order to, um, incorporate this into our budget and have another public hearing and things. So, not necessary, we, we even talked about that last week, that it would, or last meeting, that that would probably not be the case. The, uh, final certified rate is point zero zero two two four one. Again, that's just the Perwin municipal part of the, of the tax. And just, just for comparison, when you get your tax bill later this year, if you wanna look at last year's tax rate, the rate floats. We don't set a rate. We set the revenue, and then the rate floats. We did not do a tax increase this year, and our rate went from last year, it was point zero zero two three zero one, and it fell to point zero zero two two four one. That doesn't mean your taxes are going down. It means because of appreciation of homes, the rate flows down so that the city gets the same amount of tax dollars. And then you add in new homes built. That's where the new growth component comes from. So we do get a little bit of new revenue, but it's only due to new homes being built, not due to appreciation of homes. So anyways, that's the certified rate, is point zero zero two two four one, which yields property tax of, they have it estimated, of course. It all depends on the collection rate and things. Eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three ninety-five, um, was the rate before new growth. They estimate twenty-two thousand dollars in new growth, meaning they're estimating us to collect about eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, six eleven. Um, would be their estimate of what we collect, and of course, that's just an estimate. Um, assuming the collection rate stays about the same, and our collection rate is just a hint over ninety percent. So, that's how that works, and that's, we have to adopt that by June twenty-second. And we have to adopt our budget by June thirtieth, but assuming we do it tonight, we're good. Did I talk fast? Did I use any acronyms? Sometimes I get.
Did good, Dan.
Okay.
I remember that we approved the final, bless you, the final Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five Budget and Auditor Certified Tax Rate of point zero zero two two four one, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four dash zero one.
I second it.
All right, it's a resolution, so it'll be a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Topham.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
Dave Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number eleven. This is AGM Annexation Petition for Council's Consideration.
So, let me give a little bit of background on this, and we do have Dallas Buckner here from Go Civil Engineering, uh, based out of Cedar City. Um, he is, um, for the time, for tonight, representing the annexation petition. Um, this is the, um, that, we've done a few of these recently, and I just want to give a real, very, very, very short Reader's Digest version of the process, because it's very important. There's been a lot of people focused on, when is the Alex Meisner subdivision? That's what AJM stands for, Alex J. Meisner. When is that coming? What's that process gonna be like? When is that, what's gonna be the public process? When do we find out information and so forth? Um, the, the state changed the process by, by which annexations happen from unincorporated county into the city a couple of years back, and now we go through a long-drawn-out process, right? Dallas, you've been through a few of these in different cities and municipalities, including at least one here in Perwin. Um, the first part of the process is, involves the county. Um, we, there's an informal meeting between the county planner, city planner, or zoning officer, whatever, in, in this case, it was me, and the applicant. We talked through conceptual whether this is within the city's declared annexation, um, map. Is it even, is it even possible? Is it even legal? You know, sometimes cities will have overlapping maps, or sometimes somebody wanna annex it isn't even within the map, or the county says, in order for that to happen, you'd have to do X, Y, Z. Just gives people a chance to find out information. Assuming they wanna move forward with it, they go through the county process, and, and they have been doing that. This hasn't been in our arena yet. Um, it is now on our doorstep. The county process, basically, um, they, the county planner looks at it, County Planning Commission looks at it if, if it's needed, and they decide, is this gonna cause a problem for the county if we allow this product, property to be annexed into the city? Is it, is it something that's gonna affect the services that the county offers? Is it gonna affect property boundaries, roads, in, in a way that would be a problem for the county? If it is e- even somewhat concerning, or they wanna talk through it, it'll go through their planning commission, and then the, then the county commissioners look at it if needs be. Once they get done with that process, they turn it over to the county clerk, who sends out a notice of intent to file a petition. That notice of intent goes to, its purpose is to notify the, um, the affected entities, and the state defines those as the school district, the city, the county, any special service district, any entities whose tax revenue and boundaries could be affected by this. They also, at that time, notice, and this was news to me, I didn't realize they did this, but they notify some of the residents that are very closest to it, that there is a notice of intent to file a petition. The reason they do that, I believe, I'm just now guessing about the legislature, is a lot of times, an annexation will affect, um, property owners, either by, bec- e- either they will be brought into the annexation because the county does not wanna have a peninsula, and that's the case in this case, or they are a, a property owner that's right, that's, that's touching. So I think it's like, what is it, two hundred and fifty feet or something like that?
Three hundred.
Three hundred feet, the notice of intent goes to. After that happens, the applicant files a petition with the city, a petition for annexation. That's the step we're at today. What that does is that gives the city a chance to say, yes, we will look at it. We will have conversation. This will enter the city's arena, and we will discuss whether or not we're gonna entertain this or not. Um, and if, if, if the city council votes to approve the petition, that just means we start our process, the city's process. Our process, first, we do a legal review. We say, does this fit our criteria for annexation? Um, all of the stuff that our attorney wants to do to make sure that it's actually legal. Assuming that, that it, that it meets the minimum bar of legality, then we turn the time over to our recorder, who gets to do a lot of background work. Um, there's notice that gets sent out to every private property owner within a half mile, and you can just imagine how fun that is. She has to identify every parcel that's within a half mile and send out, um, certified letters and do all that. Um, we then schedule one, the first of two public hearings. Some of these things have a time limit on them, some of them don't. Um, the, the things that I'm describing with legal and with sending out notices do have, have to happen within twenty days of this and within thirty days of that. I'm not gonna bore you with all the details. We, with, in sending out that notice, will detail the time and place of a public hearing where we can actually get input from the public. Input does not have to be limited to those within a half mile. It's just a public hearing to hear from the public. And, um, during this time, we are, we can do whatever we want as far as if we want. Ultimately, we have to come up with an annexation agreement where we're gonna detail what is, what legal things are gonna happen as far as this annexation. You're gonna have to connect to our water. You're gonna have to connect to our sewer. You're gonna have to pay for this. You're gonna have to pay for that. You're going to have to deed water rights to the city. Um, there's a conversation about what sort of zones would be requested, um, and, and so forth, right? All of this is, is going on. We can have additional public meetings if we want. We can have meetings with the applicants on something like this. Um, you know, we've recent, we are in the middle of, of, in the middle, on the beginning and on the end of some smaller annexations involving a parcel or two, some small stuff. Um, those are pretty simple. Something like this, we're talking about a master zone, probably, where it would have a mix of, um, a certain type of density, you know, like. it would have a mix of a certain type of density, you know, like, like, like more, from what I remember, some half acre lots, some quarter acre lots, some areas maybe with townhomes with other types of tighter density. So it would be a master planned area. We would dictate, well, we want to have some parks here, or we want to have our roads tie into our master plan there. So an annexation of this size would definitely be more involved, right? Again, I don't want to go too far down that road, other than to tell the council and the public, if we entertain the petition, we will have a lot of time and discussion and public hearings. The very last public hearing, after it goes through planning commission with a public hearing and we get their administrative, technical input on the process, is finally a public hearing with the city council. And that's where the decision will be made with the city council, whether or not to annex, assuming the applicant still wants to, after there is back and forth on an annexation agreement and what sort of requirements. It's possible the applicant says, you know what, it's not worth it to us. We'll do our own thing in the county. We, we're not going to, we're not going to join the city. Because it is, there's a, this is a marriage. This is a marriage between, you know, private property owners that are in the unincorporated county and being held to the county's standards, code, development code and all of that, and whether they want to join the city and be held to the city's code and also have city amenities, right? So I don't want to, I don't want to go into the, the specific details of everything now. I just wanted to give everybody a background of what we're doing tonight. We're discussing whether or not to start the discussion with this developer or not. Not developer, with this parcel boundary owner who, who we know has intent to develop, so. Dallas, do you want to say anything for the, I don't know if you had a, you didn't have a presentation or anything, or did you?
Not, not particularly. I was going to add to a little bit of what you, what you had said there. Kelly, is it possible for us to put that map up on the screen? So I, I'm the engineer surveyor. The, as far as getting this agenda item on, it came together relatively quickly this week. And so Alex had plans to be out of town tonight and that's why he's not here. We'll certainly be a part of future meetings as we go to public hearings and all of that. But we started the process talking with the city a couple of years ago, when Alex first purchased this property. And we've met with city staff and the mayor a couple of times. We've met with the county. They, the county does not like peninsulas and islands. And so when we put together this map, the Alex, the AGM parcel is about a hundred and sixty acres, but the city has a parcel, part of the fairgrounds, and the county has a parcel that's in between there. I believe Linda Smith has a triangle up in the northwest corner, and then there's the small subdivision in the southwest corner. So our total annexation is going to be two hundred and four acres. And that's what we're looking to bring into the city to make it one contiguous piece with city boundaries. Outside of this, the, the annexation process is a long one. I think Dan did a great job explaining it. There's still off-ramps, public hearings, a lot more discussion, but this is just the first step to trying to work through those with the city. And for a project of this size, which the AGM parcel is a hundred and sixty acres, we do have just very, very rough conceptual layouts of some roads. In our discussions with the city, there's master plan storm drain that has to go through there. There's the potential for a water tank. It is a marriage in the sense that the city needs some infrastructure. We obviously need infrastructure for the subdivision and how do we make those two work together? And so it's a, it's a great setting. I think it would be an addition. I think one of the biggest things to keep in mind is that a project of this size is not something that happens overnight. If we go down and do annex and zone and then start moving forward with development, I know that's always a fear when, when I come to present. But this is probably at least a ten-year project. This isn't something that we're going to go put five hundred homes in two years or something like that. It's, we're assuming that there's going to be some pretty heavy infrastructure costs to get this thing up off the ground. And so the developer anticipates probably a larger phase to start, but I don't know if you're familiar with his other subdivisions in Cedar and Enech, but he plans on having this be similar to his Forby Ranch or the Canyons at Eagle Ridge, where he's a developer, sells some lots, builds some houses. And that's kind of the vision. And as Dan mentioned, from our very rough kind of layout of this project, we do have the majority being quarter acre lots, half acre lots. We have some higher densities and we also have set aside some areas for either commercial, school site, or some kind of civic, civic building. But that's something that as we work through the process with the city and the different needs of the entities involved, that we figure out who needs what and how big and all that kind of thing, so.
I have a question about the, all the application itself. You're annexing in some other property, or proposing, you're making an application, that other than your own, there's a James Harris, a Hayes Meyers, is it? Robin Smith, the city, the county. I noticed on this, this application, that the Eric and Jacqueline Hayes Meyers were listed as co, or yeah, sponsors, but they did not sign this. This was signed by Alex Meisner.
That's correct. So when we, as we've been working through the process with the county and with city staff, Dan made me aware of that if we turn the petition in by Tuesday, that we could get onto this meeting. Alex had spoken with Eric Hasmeyer and they had said that they were on board, but I didn't get the docu-sign back from him in time to make the deadline of Tuesday. He had reached out to some of the other owners that are in, I forget the name of that smaller subdivision in the southwest corner, but he had reached out to some of the other ones. I guess there was a death in the family of one. I think there's one other. And so we just, to meet the Tuesday deadline, we didn't get other ones. I did speak with Reed from the county. He said that the county would not protest as far as the, the county piece coming into the city. But in order to get it onto this meeting and start the petition process, I thought that there was a chance we could have Eric sign. And we just didn't by the time we turned it in on Tuesday.
And I, I just wanted to say, so depending on the type of annexation, there's a minimum, there's a minimum criteria that you have to, to get over in order to petition. Obviously, you know, the, the AGM, Alex Meisner, they're being told by the county, these other properties need to come in with it.
Right.
So that there's not a, so that there's not a, a, um...
Peninsula islands.
And, yeah, a peninsula that the county would now have to service. What they don't want is a weird peninsula or a donut hole of unincorporated county. So basically, the county says, yep, if you want to annex this, these others need to come in too. And the code, state code, the process anticipates this happening. And these things can be super simple and they can be complex. They can be messy. They know that there can be people that actually don't want to be annexed in. So the way the state code deals with it is if the petitioner has, if it's a private party annexation, meaning not a, not a government entity that wants to annex, then if the private property owners have at least one-third of the total value within the area, they can petition and start the process for annexation. So it allows, it allows the process to start and there to be hearings, debate, protests, you know, the whole conversation. And at the end of the day, it's a legislative decision by elected officials. So from what I could tell, I talked to the county assessor. I looked at online and I said, if you want to move forward with it, you can. Now, if they only had ten percent of the value of what the county said had to be annexed, they would have to get more signatures until they get over that thirty, I don't know if it's thirty or thirty-three percent. But regardless, judged by the, the, the county's assessor's market value of the private property, they're easily over either of those thresholds. They're around forty percent. So they're allowed to start the petition and we can have the, the conversation, you know. And I, and I suggest with, suggested to Dallas, actually, I think I suggested it to Alex, you know, obviously, the, the more of a consensus you have with the property owners, the better. You know, we want to have a good process, a good discussion, even if at the end of it, the answer is no and you do your own thing. We want to have a good, robust discussion and get as many people involved. That's why we have to do the noticing and all that stuff. So, sounds like he's been reaching out. But to answer your question, Dave, all of everybody does not have to sign the petition.
But if they don't want to, they're forced into it.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's by the state.
And we've been, and we've dealt, we actually dealt with that with the annexation that's just at, it's at the, 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 uh, the goal line. And that's that annexation involving Maverick. There was another parcel that the county said had to be annexed. That property owner was indifferent, but has had some issues with some of the requirements in the annexation agreement. And that's, we've been working through and that looks like that's finally getting resolved. But yeah, it's really, it's really, can be challenging if somebody doesn't want to be annexed and they're included in there by virtue of the county's requirements.
And part, and part of the petition also is that prior to filling this out, I had reached out to Dan and then Reed Erickson at the county to ask about, do we have the city sign if they want their city parcel to come into the city and the county? And that's when Reed indicated that they wouldn't. We could potentially have the clerk sign it to have another support of, because the county and the city's pieces are also substantially bigger than the, than the smaller ones that are the residential parcels. But I think as, as Dan alluded to, with the, with the tax value based on the assessor, we meet the one-third criteria. And we originally did propose this to just bring in the AGM parcel. But in our meetings with the county, they said, nope, these other ones need to go along for the ride as well, so.
Well, I'm not concerned about the city and the county. It makes sense for that to come into the city.
Sure.
But individuals, I am concerned that they are agreeable and this is something they want to go along with.
So Dan, on, on following through with what Dave is just saying about the other property owners, all we're doing is considering, looking at it and accepting to look over. We're not agreeing to have them start building.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Accepting...
And, and, and some people said, we're getting the cart before the horse by even talking about this tonight. And I'm, I'm saying, if we're going to discuss this, we need to accept the petition because then we're in the arena of having the discussions. If we don't accept the petition, there's no point in even moving forward with public meetings or anything because we've said we're not going to look at it. By accepting the petition, all we're saying is, yep, we're going to have our attorney look at it for legality. We're going to notify people in a half mile. See, one of the reasons why I think that it would be bad, the more I've thought about this since, since I've talked to some of the council, let's say we deny the petition and say, let's keep having some meetings about it. Let's say we get to a point, six months down the road, and we start moving forward with some action, and somebody just finds out about it then, and they're within that half mile, and they're like, you guys never noticed me. And it would be like, well, you're right, we didn't, because we never got into the space where we started noticing. I don't want to spend money to notice people now for a public meeting and then decide to accept the petition and then have an actual public hearing that we've had to pay to tell people about it later and do it twice. So...
But in the same sense, Dan, I don't feel we've been given information that warrants us to be able to make a decision this substantial, even if it is just consideration. Because all these people are here because they're wondering.
Right.
I'm wondering because I haven't been told anything. I really don't know the specifics. And, you know, to make a decision to see if it's something we even want to consider, I think we need more information.
I think, I think if that helps, the statute anticipates that in the process, they make a petition, the municipality is only accepting and accepting their, it's to consider it.
Well, I understand that.
I know. But so what, what you're asking is, pick a sport. We're kicking off and you're like saying, well, all these people here, we want to know the score. Well, we have, this just starts the process. And, and there's also provision in there. If we deny the petition outright, or don't respond to it, by operation of laws, I understand it. It's accepted. We just flat out it.
Well, it says that if we do not respond, the petition is accepted.
Right.
Right.
Not, no, if we don't respond, that's a difference.
Well, no, that's what I mean. So, so, but he's, he's come in to, you know, formalize it, do it above board to...
So here's my point, Dave. If, if we, if we deny it...
You're making it sound like they're here to discuss it all tonight.
But if we deny it and say we need more information, we haven't even notified everybody. We're assuming everybody who cares will come out to when we, when there's a public meeting about it. But until you do your proper noticing, you're not going to catch everybody. We're going to go down that road and then later, somebody will come out of the woodwork and say, well, I was never even notified about this. So that's my concern, is that we do that twice and we have people that say, I didn't know. Now, Parowan's small and, and this is not, I, I, I said to Alex, when we, I spoke to Alex like once in like the past five months, and it was the other day. And I said, Alex, you got to understand, this is a big deal for Parowan. Like, there's subdivisions like this all, all the time in, in Cedar and, and you've done, you've done a lot of work over there. You got to realize you're coming into a small community. This is a big deal. Like, we need time to chew on this and to think about it, to talk about it, see its impact. And so you, you have to understand that. And, and he responded well. And he's like, I, I don't, I don't, I want to be a good partner. I want to be given a chance to, to, to talk about it and, and say what I want to do. We can go through all that stuff. We might just have to do it again. And people say, I wasn't even notified. How many times have we had a public meeting and somebody says, gets up and says, why wasn't I told about this? And we're like, we've been talking about it for six months in city council. And they're like, well, I just found out about it. That's my only point.
But I do not want the significance of this discredited. This has the potential of changing the integrity of this community. It has a, this is a, a huge impact. This is huge. Something we've never dealt with before. Never in the history of Parowan. And I just don't think we can take it lightly.
Is anybody saying to take it lightly? Was I saying that?
I'm saying you're trying to just go and make decisions without getting informed.
No, this is a legal process that happened.
Nobody's taking it lightly. This is a, this is the procedure pursuant to statute. And I think it would, does none of us any good to start making arguments. You all get to decide at any point whether you, you don't want it, you want this, you want that, you think it's absolutely the worst thing that ever happened in the history of this town. You, you can do that. But they have the right to come to the city and ask if you want to consider, just hear them out on annexing, or if you, if you can vote to, to deny even accepting the petition for consideration, which they can then go to the county and at which point you would have no say in what would be in the same spot and be the most impactful thing to ever happen to the city, because it would be in the same spot, right?
I understand that. And I also feel like we're held hostage and I don't like that.
What's that?
I feel like we're held hostage and I don't like that.
I don't like being held hostage.
I, I would like to hear from all the citizens in, in public meetings, two or three of them. You know, that's, I want to hear from the citizens of the community. And that's what I'm excited about. If it's yay.
And that's where accepting the petition gives you that opportunity.
And that's all we, we're asking for is just...
So if we don't accept the petition tonight, then how do we go forward in a structured way? That's, that's the question. Because now we're, we've told them, no, we're not going to consider it, but let's start having public hearings or public meetings.
Yeah. I don't think we want public hearings to follow this, you know, this, what do you call, flow chart process. We need public meetings where if you could come and present to the public and give them knowledge, give them an education, give them a vision of what you're wanting to do and what you're going to do. I know we've got this marriage thing and we'd have to stipulate everything.
That's what the...
We got to know what your idea is. Because a city, I don't feel, we're in the business to, to subsidize or accommodate developers.
That's what the petition's for.
Okay. Can I make a comment? I wanted to raise my hand, but, okay. This has been weighing on me since I've gotten the packet. This has been weighing on me since I've gotten the packet with this on it, and just trying to figure out, like, wrap my mind around the whole, the whole process. So, forgive me if I'm repeating what you guys have all just said, but I need to make sure that it's clear in my mind so that we can decide what we're doing, because this is huge. And we've been, I mean, there's been talk about it throughout the town for at least a year, that this is coming, at least a year I've been hearing about it. Okay, so the petition has come to us. If we hypothetically accept the petition, that will start it so we can be looking at what the impact is, what infrastructure, all of the things, that, does that bind us to, like, if you meet all of our criteria, it just goes?
So, part of the, part of the reason why you, why it's been circulating for a year plus is because our initial meetings with staff, the city had to do a number of studies to figure out what infrastructure was needed to see if it could even support this type of development. And so that's where, I think we met like in twenty twenty-two.
It predated me. I know that it was with.
And it was just, uh, we're not approaching you, but here's what we're thinking.
Yeah, and then, and then there.
And, and, and we said, and I wasn't here, but we said, listen, we need to, we're in the process of updating our water master plan, our sewer master plan. We can't really enter into conversations of something of this substance until we even have an idea of, of how we need good new engineering to even discuss. And so, at that time, the, that was the, the conversation was, hold off, let us complete those and let us do those.
And we're still doing the sewer plan, sewer master.
Yeah, yep.
And that sewer system out there is going to be a huge issue.
So, are those all of the things that we're going to be, that they will have to work out and bring to us?
Yeah, but we're not going to spend money, we're not going to do engineering review if we're not considering this thing.
Well, I think this will give time, not only just for us, but for the residents, to totally hear everything. And then we can get their thoughts.
I'm pretty sure I know what their thoughts are, but we can, we can do it.
I know. You never know what something might change.
I, I know, but it's, it's just.
Rochelle, I think we need an answer to that, though. If we make a decision to accept this petition for annexation, are we?
Does that hold us?
Are we on the hook?
Well, I, no, that's, uh.
No.
We're not.
Yeah, there's still multiple off-ramps.
So, basically, at.
There isn't it.
There will be.
The exit is your vote at the end of this thing.
Yeah, like, you could kill it half, a third of the way through, halfway through. You don't like the way it's set up, that way through, but ultimately, it would be a vote of the council. All in favor of a hundred and sixty acre parcels and X amount of homes approving this annexation, say aye.
And e, and even with that, just from the annexation standpoint.
It's just up to me. If it were, we know where we.
I mean, you're, I know, your vote sounds, yeah.
Here's the thing. We're going to have public hea, say, let's say we deny it and we have public meetings. There's going to be questions asked in those meetings that we can't answer, because we haven't even gone through the process.
No.
They're going to say, how does this affect our streets? How does this affect our school? How does this affect our sewer system? How does this affect our water? And I'm going to say, I don't know, because we haven't gone through the process to even look at it.
The, the other thing I was just going to add is that this, this is, so generally, there's an annexation agreement that goes along with the map and everything else to complete it. But the city, the city still holds the cards as far as what kind of zoning is allowed on there, what kind of infrastructure. So, there's, just by accepting the petition, it's on a fast track to annexation, and we're off and doing whatever we want. There's, there's still a lot of things we've got to work through. Generally, when I do annexations, and then zone changes, and then even think about starting construction, it's normally a year to eighteen month process before you can even think about starting to move dirt. So, this is not a, you all say yes today, and we wait a thirty day period and.
Well, and let, let me, don't let me put words into your mouth, Councilman Burton, but I want to defend Councilman Burton. The state has gotten pretty aggressive lately with subdivision approval process.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, and they have essentially made it that when a subdivision is presented, as long as it's within the zone allowed, as long as you follow the city code, it's an administrative process that the city shall approve. We get four times to go through that process and say, nope, this doesn't comply with our code. If the developer comes back and, comes back and fixes it, we have to grant it, right?
Sure.
And so, I, 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 I feel you, Dave. I feel the frustration and the concern that if we start this process, basically, we're going to be fast tracked to an administrative, we have to say yes. Annexation is not that. We, the city, are in the driver's seat. You have, it is a marriage, because at any time, the applicant can say, I don't want to do it either, and they're out. But thi, this thing is a process to go through the whole step, and then it comes down to a legislative decision. And I feel sorry for the five that have to vote on this, because this one will, I know, be very difficult. Um, but we will go through it, we will find all the information, we'll have lots of public hearings. There's going to be a lot of passionate discussion and, and opinions, and then you guys have to make a hard decision. If you all vote no, or if three of you vote no, it's dead. But it does, there's nothing that says we have to do this if we start.
And we have public meetings, not just public hearings according to.
We could have a, we could have another, I mean, wh, wh, what do you, you keep saying that, a town hall?
Like a town hall.
Like a town hall.
Yeah, we could have a town hall.
A town, a public hearing is one that is mandated by some policy ordinance or something that meets a certain criteria and certain.
Right, we follow a thing. Yeah, we could have an open house, we could have a town hall, there could be maps, there could be, it could be more informal.
But a public meeting is different.
So, what are you defining as a public meeting, Dave? This is a public meeting. Well, I mean, do, I'm, I'm just saying, define what you, what you want to call.
A public means where there can be interaction, interchange between the public and, you know, the developer in this case, where they can make presentations, ask questions, filter questions, I mean, or, you know, there can be an exchange. And there can be, you know.
We.
Open house or?
No, it's a county.
Yeah, some.
I mean, and how Rochelle had to wrap her head around this, I, this has been really hard. This has been one of those that I wish we weren't in these seats, because this is a really hard one.
You don't have to vote.
From what I understand, and you can clarify legal, you can clarify, um, Dallas, but if our city council says no, it doesn't mean that that doesn't happen. It doesn't mean that development doesn't happen. That development will still happen. It'll just be in the county. So, I just want everyone to be clear of that.
Yeah, there, there is a little path forward in the county if it's not running to the city. But based on this location and being surrounded by Parowan City, I mean, there's, that's when we get into the whole discussion of, is it better to bring it in, have Parowan City receive the taxes versus, I mean, then they're using all your infrastructure to get to and from, and the city is not the recipient of. Which is a whole separate discussion, but from our initial meeting with the county, and then telling if these other parcels have to come along for the ride, and whether or not this can or can't happen in the city, the, the county said there is a path forward if the city does deny it, so.
So, this is just us saying we will hear you.
I understand that, Mayor, believe me. But, uh, I have a, a comment. Well, two que, a question to you first. Have you done a development of this sort, this magnitude, in an adjoining community like Parowan, of Parowan's size, Parowan's heritage, culture, so forth, versus a development totally isolated, independent, more or less on its own, developing its own integrity and so forth? This is going to have a great impact on this community. And this community is rich in a, in heritage and culture and something that we don't, I, there's nobody here that wants to lose that. And I don't know if you can protect that. That's the one question. Another one, I keep hearing about the taxes and the tax base, and that's so on, so on. What about fifty years from now, or I don't care, hundred, whatever, and we're all dead and gone? But the city, Parowan City is going to be responsible for that infrastructure, even if we require you to do it and all, everything about it. We have to maintain it, we have to improve it, we have to upgrade it, we have to have personnel to take care of it, and so on, so on, so on. That tax base and that, that, well, that impact fees and things, they're not going to cover that then. That's going to be on the citizens that are alive here and having to sustain that. You're going to be gone, I'm going to be gone, but I have to look at those people that are going to be here.
I remember some houses being different than any of the existing houses that are already in Parowan or any other community.
You're talking of increasing this a third, more, or whatever, than existing Parowan? That is a huge impact. And that is a, you know, that's going to increase our, our needs, our, you know, our operational cost, our, everything. Our, everything's going to be increased, but it isn't going to be offset by those taxes, believe me.
Dan?
Yes.
What, what expense would the city incur by accepting the annexation to do the study?
So, if, well, there's not a study. So, if we, if we accept the petition, um, we have legal review, our, as long as that doesn't get onerous, that's, that's, uh, covered. Sorry. Um, we have, um, some notification that needs to be done. Um, Kelly could maybe give us a better idea. Do you have any sort of idea? We have to send out notice to people within a half mile. That's going to be, draw a half mile around the outside of that box. By the way, north is to the left on the map. Kelly, on Google Sheets, couldn't orient it, not her problem, I don't even have to put it on Google Sheets. But basically, a half of a mile is going to be a good portion of the city.
Yeah, it'll include at least half of Parowan.
We're going to have to send a notice. Yeah, so that's where I see really the cost being. Um, most of the cost of these, um, are borne by the applicant. The, the surveying, their engineering. Um, when we say, okay, we need to know how this is going to impact our water system, we say, here is our, here's our model, this is our engineer who did it, you're welcome to talk to them and get their model. They then come up with how they would present it. We take it to our city engineer. The city engineer reviews it, comes back with comments. We would put in our annexation agreement that they would, um, cover the cost. Like, like any building permit, if there's plan review fees and stuff like that, we have that done by the developer. Um, on an annexation, um, we're not going to incur probably much more than the, um, than notification to, um, surrounding citizens, and that's going to be, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to just throw out a number because it'll be wrong, but half a mile from there. Um, and that's, and then any costs that we incur to have, have any public meetings, I don't know what would be involved with that, if we get, go into a larger space.
Would the applicant, would the applicant pay for those, or is that the city?
Um, we are required to do the noticing, just like the county had to do noticing on public intent. Um, that's, that's on us for sure. Um, we could definitely ask in an annexation agreement that they would reimburse us for costs that we've spent. I don't know if there's any reason why you couldn't do that.
Giving you like, kind of an idea, like when we did the wrap tax, when I had to mail out those, it cost me twelve, me, cost the city, twelve hundred dollars to mail out those, and they were, so I think it'd be less than that because it would be in an envelope type of a thing, but.
And you had to be less to every mailbox.
And I had to send that to every mailbox in Parowan. Um, so that's just kind of like, maybe a rough postage estimate of, it would be less than that.
And, and more of the.
In postage.
And the more of the asking the question is for the residents to know that it, even just to accept that, that it would not cost the city really much. And I just wanted to make sure for myself, too.
Yeah, most of this is going to be, it's going to be staff time meetings, um, attorney time. Um, we're going to request a lot from them. They're going to spend money. They're going to spend, the, the applicant's going to spend money with, with Dallas as the engineer and surveyor, with any, um, if we need them to do hydraulic analysis, um, on the water, they're going to spend money on engineering. Um, and that's potentially all sunk cost if we tell them no at the end. Um, but it is what it is. This is the development business, and, and we need information. To Dave's point, this is a huge impact, we need information.
Yeah, and I still would appreciate if you could tell me if you've done a development in this proximity of an existing community like Parowan.
So, myself, I, I do a lot of, I do a lot of development, a lot of land development projects. As far as I've done all of Alex's subdivisions, I think Alex, um, I don't know if we are on Alex or Alex's subdivisions, but I would say there are some of the best in Cedar. He has one in Enic, Settler Square, that's, I would say probably the best subdivision in Enic. We've done a bunch of them in, um, in Cedar City. As far as the size, I've done, but as far as doing it in an as small community as Parowan, I have not done one.
What is the size of Settler Square versus Enic?
Like, how many parcels in relation to the population of Enic?
I guess Settler Square was already inside Enic City boundaries, huh?
It was, you know, we had this, we had this zone, but it was already in the city. I want to say that was, it was a hundred and twenty or a hundred and sixty homes.
Dallas, could you speak up? The people that are watching online can't hear you.
Sure, yeah, so it was a hundred and sixty homes, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the canyon's Eagle Ridge is a smaller one, Fourby Ranch is more of a ranch, uh, one acre lot. And now it is, it's probably two hundred and something acres, but I hope, I hope the whole thing's done. Um, so, we've, Alex and I together have done projects of this size, but as far as the, doing it in a, in a smaller city, um, it's a quite a small sort of done in Enic.
So, have you worked with cities as far as in your development in this marriage process? Or have you been more independent in the county?
Uh, we haven't done any subdivisions in the county, so all of our, all of our subdivisions have been with the cities. Um, and we've worked with the cities through every step of the way. Obviously, the new subdivision process is different than, um, than the old one as far as the amount of public hearings and meetings required to get subdivisions through. Um, though we've worked with every city that we've done subdivisions inside of, and applied to the master plans, and, um, made improvements, and, and, and built to their standards and the rules set forth, which is within each individual one.
Thank you.
Dallas, do you know, would you, speaking for Alex, which obviously you can and can't do to some degree, would, would he be open to having, um, have an open house, have a, have a, more of a, of a, I, and I wasn't trying to be antagonistic, Dave, I wasn't sure what you meant by a public meeting different than a public hearing, but, but it sounds like more of an open house, more of an informal, information can flow. I mean, these can be very rigid, the way we do public hearings. Wa, wa, was that something that you think that, that Alex would be open to doing?
I, I would, I would think so. I know that there's a number of public hearings that are required with this already. Depends on what, I, I don't know what Parowan City's typical annexation agreements look like. I don't know, um, from annexation to established zoning, and if the city has done development agreements. Because there's, there's still, there's annexation, then there's zoning, then there's subdivision, there's.
So, I'm thinking maybe, this is, this is maybe, I'm just, I'm, and I'm spitballing on the, on the, off the cuff here. Um, if you had a meeting that was before we got too into the weeds, because as the city manager, I care really a lot about roads, sidewalks, parks, um, drainage, sewer, water, power, all of that stuff. Like, zoning, that's the stuff that I'm going to really be intense. And I get that this is a lot bigger than that. But we're going to spend a lot of time and effort working through those things. But I think what, and again, I'm putting words in Dave's mouth, I wonder if we had a public meeting early on that talked about high level, that showed a map, that showed a conceptual plan, that showed, this is our proposal that we put half acre homes here, we put quarter acre homes here, this is a, this is a conceptual map of how the streets could go and so forth. We then, if we wanted to move forward, could then spend some time and get into the nitty gritty and figure out all the details. Because I know there's going to be questions. It's going to be like, how does this impact this, and how does this impact that? Then we could get into that nitty gritty and have another public meeting where we propose, okay, if we're to move forward, we know that we would probably have to do X, Y, Z with the water, X, Y, Z with the sewer, X, Y, Z with a, with a, you know. And, um, and we can have the official public hearings, you know, as needed. We can't not have those. But I'm saying, if you had a. but I'm saying, if you had a public meeting that was informal on the front end that talked high level, and then you had a public meeting on the latter end, when we actually had a lot of this stuff discussed. That's an idea, I don't know, Dave, is that kind of in the realm of what you're thinking or looking for, or...
Well, sure, I think we, I think everybody feels like we're in the dark.
Right.
And we just don't know, and who likes to make decisions on the unknown? Who wants to have the unknown?
But a lot of times, you don't know the answers until you get into the, you know what I mean?
Oh, I understand, but we haven't been offered that.
That's what we're doing, that's what we're starting today, though.
Well...
The first step.
I, I think the only thing which is...
That's an opinion, yeah.
To, to add to that, Dan?
It's a fact.
Depending on what level of annexation agreement or development agreement or zoning, it, the only thing that concerns me, which is, to, to do something at a very, very high level, I, I think to give information to the public makes sense, but there's a lot of things that, when we just put together a pretty, pretty color coordinated, hey, this zone, this color, a lot of that stuff changes, especially when we get into the weeds of actually designing, the city saying, hey, actually, we need a water tank here, hey, we need a master plan storm drain, we need some kind of, so, just without backing ourselves into some kind of corner where we started the annexation process and say, hey, this is our high level exhibit, and then we get three or four months down the road, we've done some more work with the city, we find out the city's exact needs, and then we've gotta move this here, or shift those things.
And now there's, now there's, wait, when did this get moved, why did that get moved, what's the conspiracy?
Yeah, but I think there's a conceptual perception that people understand that this is a, well, we say living document, things that progress and move, but you gotta have, what, what have we at this point? Have we had anything?
So, I, I guess one thing to just also clarify is that from, the, the annexation process is just bringing the property in.
I know.
Then there's the zoning aspect, and what the city currently has, is the current, the city currently has a, I don't know if you, you all call it a general plan, or it's a future land use?
It's called a master plan zone, and I need to double check to see if, and we have, there's one requirement on there, and I think you meet that requirement, you have to have a certain number of acreage, a certain amount of acreage.
I'm just talking about the general plan, in gen, so...
Yeah, we have the general plan.
And then there's a general plan, I believe this whole area is general plans for quarter acre lots, or low density lots.
All of our, all of our zones, R1, R2, and R3 are quarter acre lots. There's different density available on those quarter acre lots, that's, that's the way our code works, um...
It's yellow on the general plan.
So, the, the general plan doesn't designate R1, R2, R3, the zoning map does, but the general plan in the future land use map of unannexed property, I think it has it as low density, which we would typically call an R1 zone. So, if you, if you came in tomorrow and it was a, it wasn't big enough to be a master plan zone where we get really creative with it? If you came in tomorrow with a ten acre subdivision, and the mass, and the general plan had it as light density, the planning commission, in their role, would look at it and say, okay, the, the general plan says that this needs to be light density. That could be rural estates zone, or it could be R1 zone. That's generally what we would call a light density plan. Um, and I'm pretty sure that's what, I'm double checking.
But right now, in the county, it is R1 half. You come into the city, you can go from half acre to quarter acre, so you double your density potential. Other than if you were to use, the county has provisions for an R, what is it, 4K?
They have R4K, they have performance, they have...
Yeah.
...prester, they have a lot of options. Not to get, not to get like a townhome density, but they do have, they do have options to go below, oh, that isn't, that's much better.
Mhm.
(laugh)
Right, but there are provisions for that, I mean, you have to meet, you know, some...
Well, I, I guess that's, that's kind of where I was going with it, is that the annexation just brings it in, and then there's the zoning, and outside of just what the general plan's already set at for the low density, to do anything besides low density still requires council approval, and so if we do pursue a master planned MPD zone, that's something that, even if it comes in and it's annexed into the city, that's, the council still has the discretion to say, we want this, or this is too dense, not dense enough, commercial, no commercial, all of that.
Yeah, there'll be a recommendation from planning and zoning, and at the end of the day, it's a legislative decision on zoning, just like the, like the map is itself, it's changing it. Um, finally, I got my, my, um, computer working on that. So, the, um, future land use map, which is the section of the general plan that actually has the map with the coloring, which is what you referred to, oh, no, and I copied over the top of that. Yeah, might have to get that again, I don't have it on my, on my laptop, I, I saved a file over the top of it. Um, I'm pretty sure that it is yellow, and it is light density, which means it, it would be either R1 or, or rural estates, is what planning and zoning would most likely recommend. But you could, you could decide to put it as R2 if you wanted, as the council, if they requested and you granted it. Or you could say it needs to be this, and this, and this, you know, we get to draw that map as needed, or as we desire when, when it's zoned.
Okay, so basically, we're saying, if we don't, if we deny this tonight, they're possibly going to go and do it in the county, and then we're gonna be left in the dark, and it's still going to impact us. Or we can accept it and be kept in the loop and have all of this decisions.
And remember, accepting is just getting more information.
Right.
It's not to start the pod.
And that's why I was saying it's the first step, because if we deny it, we're basically just saying, do whatever, whatever... Do whatever and go do it. You don't need to engage with us either, which is the thing about making decisions about us, without us.
I want the correct information out there for the residents, because I myself, I've heard anywhere between two hundred and five hundred homes. And I think the residents deserve to know exactly what is going to be out there, as we do, too.
Well, I think you feel as much in the dark, like I feel in the dark, and I am sitting up here, and I have to make this decision, and I'm like, I do not know what is even going on.
But I don't, I think we need to, we need to move forward so we can find out, and the residents can find out.
I just don't want, and I think you guys have clarified this, but I'm gonna say it again, because I need it on record, Callie, that us, by accepting their petition, this does not bind us to accept the subdivision coming into Parowan. Right, we are not bound to that.
Correct.
Okay, that needs to be on the record, because...
I agree with you.
That's the thing that I've been the most worried about, is accepting this, and then it's gonna be pushed through, and then it's gonna be taken out of our hands, and my house is gonna get egged, or something, I don't know.
Yeah, see, you admit it.
It's just all over.
I don't think we can open up to public comment, just because we could be here, and we'll, we'll have multiple public opportunities. Um, I'm just concerned that we'll get into the weeds in a big way. I would let you come up, but then I'd have to let everyone come up.
Why don't you just take a vote?
Yes, take a vote.
Okay, so, I will open up to the council to make a motion, and that would be to accept the petition for consideration, or not.
I move to accept the petition for AGM annexation.
I second it.
All those in favor? Do we wanna do it by roll call, just so it's on record, or do we, are we good? Okay, we'll do it by roll call, we'll start with Councilmember Topham.
Thank you. Rochelle Topham, aye.
Dave Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, nay.
All right, motion carries, thank you.
Nay.
All right, thank you, and I'm sorry, I didn't let you come up. I always feel bad about that, um, but we will have public hearings in the town hall, and we'll have everything. We'll talk about this, and talk about it, and talk about it, it's probably the biggest decision that, one of the biggest that's ever been made. Um, all right, moving now into item number twelve, which is the employee retirement insurance benefit discussion. So, we had a special meeting about this last week, and we met for probably an hour and a half about it, and we did, um, decide to bring it forward to vote in the action meeting at this, at the city council meeting. And, does anyone need a refresh on that, or are we ready to make a motion and vote?
I can give a refresh, if you'd like.
Let's do it, do a quick...
Okay, so, quick, 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 um, long discussion, this was the culmination of multiple discussions, but we had a dedicated meeting to really hash it out. Um, what was the consensus? And I, we even voted on the consensus, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a meeting to take action, so it was just to end the meeting with, with a consensus. What we talked about was essentially creating a division in time of how a policy would be applied to different employees. Employees that were hired before the two thousand twelve resolution would, what's that? We call it the two thousand twelve, but it was actually in two thousand eleven, would be grandfathered to the policy that was in effect before that resolution. However, we had to clarify some things, if you remember. We clarified that there was not a payout option of that, meaning we would not allow a, we would not assign a cash value to it, there wasn't a payout. We also, um, from reading through the original, um, motion, the original resolution that created the policy, decided that it would not be secondary to Medicaid, Medicare, or insurance from other subsequent employment, 'cause that's what the word said.
Right.
It would be, if you had those, you did not get that benefit. If you don't have those, the benefit was, was in effect. Um, and, and, and since that does not mention spouse insurance, th- then it's silent on that. So, in other words, if you had spouse insurance, you could still get this benefit. What negates that benefit is Medicaid, Medicare, or insurance from subsequent employment. That would apply to a handful of employees, it was something like eight, nine, or ten, I can't remember.
Oh, the eleven, I think.
Was it eleven?
Eleven.
I thought it was ten.
Was it ten? Thought it was ten.
Then, you have any employees hired be, after that date, until today, we said the date of this meeting approximately, 'cause we don't have anybody in the pipeline that's coming in, would, would, would be grandfathered to the policy that we have right now in the personnel policy manual. And it was pretty well defined. We actually didn't even need to detail any vagueness, 'cause it says Medicaid, Medicare, it actually, um, it says any other in, in insurance, um, would, would make it so you don't get this benefit, right? And so we just basically said, we will follow the wording of the current manual, and, and the vague stuff that we had, it addressed. Then you have a third class of employees, if you wish, and that's, anybody who gets hired on from this point on, this benefit dies, it's gone, we do not offer this benefit anymore. Um, and that, we don't know who that is, it's future employees that it would have otherwise applied to. So, that's the notes that I wrote down from that meeting as a consensus, but it was a work meeting, we could take action, so, that's, that's your recap.
Need any clarifications, or are we ready to make a motion? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept as outlined by Dan. Can I say that?
Yeah.
Sure. The employee, the employee retirement insurance benefit.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Uh, who said nay?
I did.
No, I heard two.
I did, too.
Oh, okay.
So, we have David Burton, nay, John Dean, nay, Sharon Downey, aye, and Councilmember Topham, and David Harris, aye.
So, we, I'm gonna clarify who we is. City staff, we will have, we will update the manual with a version date that includes this change, and we will have, um, that given to the employees, so they have a chance to sign that it has been updated.
Just on the retirement part, portion, right?
Just that piece, not anything else redlining or in that.
And, and how do we wanna do that?
Because we haven't...
Because what we're doing is grandfathering them, so what we'll do is, we'll put together a, we'll put together a sheet that says, you, you are grandfathered to this policy, you are grandfathered to this policy, and then they can acknowledge that they received a copy of it.
An understanding.
And the new policy, this will be, this, this policy will be stricken from the new policy. So, when somebody gets hired on and they signs that they received a copy of the personnel policy, this won't be in it. That's what we'll do.
All right.
But it pertains just to that specific item?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
More discussion to come, on the others, on anything else in there.
Okay, now moving to item number thirteen, this is planning and zoning items, this is definitions of ADUs, IADUs, structures and uses prohibited in zones unless expressly permitted.
For the benefit of my blood pressure and council members' blood pressure, can we take the map down and put the agenda back up?
Thank you.
We wanna keep you all healthy. Yeah, 'cause we are looking at whatever is up there, it's in front of our face. Good call, thank you.
So, item number thirteen, um, we need to, uh, there was a public hearing in planning commission, a lot of discussion on some of these items, and, um, we got it on the meeting as an action item, prepared it in ordinance format, but the language in the action meeting doesn't describe the ordinances, it wasn't noticed as an ordinance with the ordinance number. So...
So, we can't do it.
Just to be, to be safe, to be, to, to be thorough, we need to table this on the next agenda and have it in, and have it say on the agenda that we're going to adopt by ordinance, make those changes. Definitions for ADUs and IADUs, and structures and u- uses prohibited in zones unless expressly permitted. Um, I mean, we, we could move forward today, but I think we would be in a gray area, and I'd rather not, on something like an ordinance.
Okay, so I need a motion to table, item number thirteen. I'll make a motion to table.
I just wanna make note that we've already had the public hearing, so we don't have to do that again.
Right, right.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to table item number thirteen until our next meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now, moving into our work meeting, this is item number fourteen that we determined at the beginning of the meeting to table, so I need a motion to table item number fourteen.
Can, can we may, just make a comment of, on it?
Yes, mhm.
Because there's gonna be so much work that we have to go through it, I would like to see the meetings in the afternoon, where we can do two or three hours worth of work, 'cause we've got that book to go through. And we need to do, we need to spend the time to do it. And especially during the summer right now, where at least we have one council member available during the day.
So, do you wanna do this the week of the seven?
I was gonna say, let's pick a date.
Like a special meeting? Um, so, we could do it the same way we did the other special meeting to talk about employee benefits. Does everyone wanna counter that tonight?
Well, some of us, the summers are more busy.
But the work doesn't stop.
Never complained. So, are we supposed to schedule it then?
Yes.
We don't have to, but it'd sure be good, 'cause when else are we gonna do it? We'll have to do it by email.
No, let's do it.
We can do Wednesday, June twenty-sixth?
I'm okay with that. So, Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at three o'clock? You like that?
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Well, that work for everybody?
And there's no motion, we're in a work meeting, so, but we can just plan on that.
Are we still gonna have a water recharge engineering meeting that morning?
No, it's the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
Yeah, every other week, and that would be the nineteenth.
Oh, that's why I always miss it.
Okay, so if that works for everybody, we'll have a special meeting on June twenty-sixth at three o'clock to discuss the redlined items in the policy and procedure manual, as well as any other concerns throughout that manual. Um, item number fifteen, this is a little more specific, um, based on a timely manner, and this is the employees and firefighters' use of city facilities and pool. Um, in the past, there, what has the policy been? Who's familiar with the policy? What we've done in the past with the pool and the city facilities? I know Shane Scott made a change, I've heard in, about discounts or use of, or something.
But, excuse me, mayor, but that's included in the manual, and we'll discuss that.
So, do you wanna just discuss that at the same meeting? 'Cause I was gonna throw that in if we did, okay, we can do that.
So, do you want to do that?
You want to do that?
So the only thing I would say is that this is kind of timely. Um, we have, we have employees asking, are you gonna do what you used to do? It's the summers here, the pool, it, specifically questions are about the pool, and, and they're wanting to reserve dates and, and things like that. So, I mean, we can, we can certainly do, do whatever the council wants to do. We can wait. I don't think this is in the employee manual, though.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
Yes.
There's a section about it that's, that is also, uh, I think is redlined right now.
So we can do it then? Or we can do it tonight, since it's on there? We can't take action?
But this is, but this is in a work meeting, how can we take action?
That's what I'm saying, we can't take action, but we could have the discussion about that item, it's on, it's in.
It's already in effect, so. I'd rather do it all together.
Okay, and then we could, we have city council the next evening, anyway, on the twenty-seventh.
If it's, if it's in the handbook now, for what you need right now, you can go by what's in.
The problem is, is that we, we have our, we have it pricing structured differently. We don't offer a, a season pass.
Right.
I don't know exactly the way the manual reads, but if it reversed to things that don't apply now, it might be a problem.
Yeah.
If it just says employees ha- can free swim, then it is what it is. Do, do you know off the top of your head?
It mentions passes, it mentions, you know, use of pu- of city facilities, I think.
I think it is city facilities.
Well, if you'd rather wait and do it in that meeting, I'm just saying that we have people asking, and I'm like, I would rather this taken out to make this.
But if we do something here, and then we go and address it and change it then.
We could schedule it for a, an action meeting the next day in city council.
Yep.
We could do that.
Intending to, for sure, make a decision on that.
Yep.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
We'll just make sure that's on action for the.
So we already discussed it, we don't necessarily need to table it, we can just move it to that meeting, because we did have a discussion about what, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna handle that. All right? So item number sixteen is the discussion on seasonal road closure of six hundred west for high water and possible removal of the swing gates.
Okay, we're just tackling all the fun ones tonight. Um, since I have been here and long before I have been, not long before, because they haven't, the gates haven't been up for a long time, um, they were put up under the previous police chief's, um, time at the count, at, in his position. Um, I don't know how that whole decision process went, and we're not gonna litigate that, that's not the point of tonight. The, the question is, is this is a darned if you do, darned if you don't type situation. I get a lot of complaints, Public Works, our police chief get a lot of complaints about the road closure at six hundred during water time, um, when you have high runoff. In, in low runoff, um, all that water gets captured by the farmer's diversion, and we don't have any water that ends up down at six hundred. In the spring, when there's high runoff, you get water there. Um, if you, if you're not familiar with the, with the site, we have, um, big swing gates that swing out and get padlocked, plus there's signage that says, road is closed when water present, right? Um, last year, we had a lot of complaints come in about hurry and open the road, right? It's a huge inconvenience, and, and it is, to have to drive all the way around, whether you're a resident, where, there's some that do business and that farm, and that cuts off a lot of time to get through there, time and money and, and frustration, right? And when we have it closed, it's an inconvenience, to say the least. However, the flip side of that coin is, when it is open and water is present, it is a danger. Um, there are some that are concerned, and that are like, if there's an inch of water, the city should have that closed. I don't want to see a kid get washed down the thing, or somebody that goes through in a low-profile car, you know, and they get, you know, they, they have a problem in there, and now they can't get out, or something like that. And I've received very passionate complaints on both sides of this issue. One of the biggest challenges is the water level is not constant, even during a single day. Because what happens is, as it warms up on the mountain, there's a delayed effect, it's like, whatever it is, six hours or twelve hours, or something like that. The hottest part of the day in Brianhead means that our highest water surge is about midnight, and then it starts to fall back off. So you can go by in the middle of the day and be like, there's an inch of water there, this is ridiculous, why doesn't the city open the road? And we go out there, we open the road, next thing you know, there's a really hot day, next thing you know, there's eight inches barreling across there. And what we don't want to do is employ a city employee to sit there and go by there ten times a day, oh, it's, it's a little too high, close it, oh, it's a little too low, open it, it's a little too high, and, and back and forth, back and forth. We have a, we have, you can decide whether we have too many or too few employees, but we don't have a lot of employees, and I certainly don't want to babysit this thing. So, what we've typically done in the past is we've left it shut until it pretty much gets to where the flows don't peak above a certain amount, and the complaints get so high, and we say, fine, and we open it. There has been different attempts to, say, by law enforcement in the past, if you get water on your tires, we're giving you a ticket. We call it the, the wet tire ticket. I know there's been a lot of consternation about that. Actual tickets being fought and gone through. There have been padlocks cut this year, multiple padlocks cut. We have people that are on purpose destroying city property in an attempt to try and make a statement. We now have people driving around it. And would, do we barricade it? Do we like go to war and barricade it? It's, it's like this thing, right? So last year, when it got to a fever pitch, I reached out to our insurance representative with the local government's trust, and I said, what's the recommendation for a road like this? What's the city's liability? What, what, what do you recommend? There's gotta be some recommendations. And what he told me was, don't put gates in, in the first place.
Yeah.
And I was, didn't expect that answer, and I said, why? And he says, if you put a gate in, then you acknowledge that there's a problem, and now when somebody bypasses the gate and goes down in and washes themselves into the creek, they can come and sue you, because you acknowledge you had a problem, and then you tried to stop them, but you didn't do a very good job. It's like putting a fence around a pool, and somebody injures themselves going over the fence, falls in the pool, they're gonna sue you, and they're probably gonna win. He said, there is a certain rule, and maybe our attorney knows this, maybe, I love putting him on the spot, that says the average man, or woman, or person, when there is a hazard, a road hazard, is expected to react to it. Just like if something falls off a truck and it's in the road, there's a road hazard. That doesn't mean the city has responsibility, because there's a board in the road, it means there's a road hazard. Now, if we just left that thing alone, and, and we just said, yep, and it was a big gigantic pothole, maybe at some point it reaches the point where the city's liable, but there's a certain thing that says that due to an act of nature, or something like that, there's a road hazard, the average person should react to that accordingly, without the city taking on, stepping over the liability threshold. Again, this is insurance mumbo jumbo. He just said, best thing you could do is not ever put it in. I'm like, well, we got it in now, and he said.
Take it out.
I don't know what to tell you, um, I would have never put it in, you do have signs there that say that the road is closed when water is present, they're very prominent.
Is that enough?
What do you guys want to do? Yeah, no, there's, it's about kids one way or the other. There's kids that play in it as it is.
May I inject a comment?
I'm hoping that you inject a comment.
Um, I think this falls under the same premise as the reason that we do not fence out like Meeks Pond, because, and the DWRs follow this criteria, is that any time you imp, you know, you impose a restriction, you take on a liability. So if you don't put it there in the first place, you don't have the re- liability, it falls to, like you were talking, self-responsibility, if there is such in today's world. So you need, I think that, I think we just need to remove them.
So are there any other thoughts or questions about that? Because if we all determine to remove them, we can just move it to the next meeting as an action item. Or would we even, would we need to vote on this, Dan, to remove those?
Can't.
I would like you to decide.
That's what I mean next.
Because whatever we do, there are gonna be complaints, and I would like to us have decided this as a city governmental body.
Scott?
I'm not shirking my responsibility, I'm just saying, I'd like you guys to give me some input and decide.
Scott, do you legally agree with what the insurance company said?
Well, I don't like insurance companies, so I wouldn't want to do that, but I, I can tell you, Dan touched briefly on liability. I, I'm not sure I really understand the premise of the question. Um, if we're talking about closing roads, or high water, or removal of swinging gates, usually those things are based upon, uh, a situation at the time, it's not like something that's gonna take ten days to plan. I mean, if there's a flood, there's a flood, you close the road.
Right.
If, if there's a swinging gate that has an edge on it, and somebody's gonna get cut, or there's a crash, or there's, whatever it is, those are usually issues that are made by reasonably prudent people under like or similar circumstances, and sometimes you have weeks to plan, and sometimes you have five seconds. You have five minutes to say, close that road on one forty-three, or somebody's gonna die the road, do you know what I'm saying? So there's no one answer, other than common sense, and being reasonable, uh, under the circumstances, and no one can predict, um, uh, what the, what the, uh, proper answer would be. But if you have time to plan, I guess you can discuss those things, but if a city manager or the mayor has certain powers to declare emergencies, uh.
Well, and, and those powers, the emergency closure, that road could always happen. Like, the chief, in, in, there's a flood coming down, he could park there, turn his lights on, put up some candles there, and says, no, this road's closed.
Yeah.
Public Works could do the same.
Yeah, I, so, so if, if you have the luxury of time to plan those things, based on possible liability, or seasonal weather issues, but the rest of it is just common sense.
Yep. So one other aspect of this, because we don't, we, we can't take action tonight, I have discussed this with Aldo, our new Public Works Director, um, with some money, we could turn what is a Ford into an improved Ford, a Ford being the term that, that, of the structure that that is, it's a low-water crossing. We could put in a culvert that would handle a certain cubic feet per second flow of water, without water going on the top. Um, they're, they're kind of a maintenance nightmare, but we could put in some culverts that would allow, most of, most of the time, if you had a certain culvert there, it would take the water, right? That thing is designed to let a flood go over the top of it. Most of the time, i- i- if we improved it, we could have, it wouldn't even be an issue, because there would just be water flowing through a pipe. I'm saying maybe a, a, a twenty-four inch pipe, or a couple of eighteen inch pipes, that would handle the majority of the water, that's frustrating people, because they're like, that's not a lot of water. Um, if it gets over that point, and, yeah, there's water on the road, leave the exact same signs, don't go there, there's water on the road. The road's technically closed. You could give it, get, be given a ticket for getting your tires wet, because it says road is closed, when water is present on the roadway.
Yes.
Um, but, that's time, and that's some money to do that, um, some engineering depending. Um, I, I don't know, Aldo's like, I think we could come up with something if we had a little bit of time, and we do have time, the road has been opened.
Let's get the bridge built first, Dan.
I agree.
Before we worry about culvert.
Can I listen to what the trust tells us? Because the trust is who provides our insurance, and they're saying it's a bad idea to have a gate there.
There's also an argument that you had a gate, and then you took it out, right? But he said, best thing to do is just never put a gate. You drive out through the county, you drive up any of these roads up the canyon, there's water on the road, different times of the year. We're not shutting the, those roads every time there's water present.
Just take them out. But there's also not a sign probably saying, road closed when water present, or something, so.
Right. So, hence why I wanted to bring it to you, um, do you want to bring it on the next one for a vote?
Yeah, we can advance it to the next council agenda, and we can vote on it.
Yeah.
Mhm, mhm.
All right. Okay, this next item is pretty, um, it's just a casual conversation. We talked several months ago about making our center and Main Street more visible. Um, we also talked about two hundred and Main, but most specifically, we talked a lot about Center and Main, and UDOT did offer to put more signage, additional signage, additional striping. We also talked about maybe doing some painted crosswalk that look like a brick pattern or something, just to do a lot of visual cues for people that are driving, that there are pedestrians that could be crossing on those, on that intersection. So I'm just bringing this for a discussion in a work meeting, because, um, if we want to engage UDOT to move forward with doing that additional notification on that intersection of pedestrians crossing, then I want to be sure that when that start, stuff starts happening, um, that the council and the community aren't surprised.
Yes, we need to do it, and the public's asked for it, so we should do it.
Okay. Just wanted to double check with everyone.
My opinion.
And then on painting bricks and things, we'll just have to figure out what that would cost to do that, if we decide to do further improvement. They also recommended sign, um, flags, orange flags, that aren't ones you carry across, but that are just there all the time, um, so people know that there's something going on.
Is UDOT only in charge of Main Street? They're not in charge of the other one that's down by the elementary, like that Main crosswalk?
No.
That's the city.
Okay, yeah. Okay. So with that, that's the end of our work meeting agenda, so we just need to go now into item eighteen, which is reports, updates, old business follow-up by the elected officials and staff, and we'll start with Councilmember Burton.
Historic Preservation Committee met on June fifth, um, they approved a new fence for State Bank on ninety-three North Main, uh, carport, they approved for Freight Martinez on forty-seven West Pioneer Avenue, and they talked about the Fremont Monument, and, uh, maybe comparing to some needs there are at the Heritage Park. And I think that was about it for the Heritage. If anybody doesn't have any questions. Um, Planning and Zoning met, uh, they had a public hearing concerning the addition of ordinance, zoning ordinance fifteen point four five, internal accessory dwelling units, they approved that to come to the city council for approval. Uh, there is, see, there was a conditional use permit for a gazebo approved on four thirty-five West, two hundred North, and the master transportation plan was, uh, discussed in depth, and with the presentation, or with a representative, Devin from Jones and DeMille was present to do that. There's still some concern, and some, you know, some things that they're going to make recommendations, I'm sure. Uh, they discussed the external accessory dwelling unit code, and, uh, some sign code on, uh, I think, uh, what do you call it, on homeowners' business? And I don't, is Keith hair, Keith, did there, was there any deci- any decision made on that, from the planning and zoning? Or was it just a discussion? Because you presented it.
There has been a decision, um, proposed language will be presented at the next Planning and Zoning meeting, and then brought before this commission.
Okay, okay.
Approval into ordinance form.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, we did, Lauder Board didn't meet, and, uh, so I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
And I had no meetings, and the mayor, did you listen to it? The patchway?
I went up, I went up to the meeting.
You went up to it?
Mm-hmm.
I'll let you, if you have anything to report on that, but I do not have anything to report.
All right, thank you.
I have very little. Uh, Shade Tree Committee, uh, meeting was canceled, and I missed the library board. Sorry. Cooking for a lot of people.
Uh, we didn't have Economic Development and Airport Board meet, met, and last, I hear, weren't we sending that to Legal, Dan? To a final review?
Um, yep, I have to discuss, um, something with, um, our attorney on that, but we should have, there was one more thing that they wanted to see added into the contract, and they wanted to make a recommendation in the next meeting, and bring it to city council, so, looks like that's successfully being resolved.
Good deal, and that's it for me.
So did you want to make your request about council meeting?
Oh, I would, I would like to see if we can move it to five o'clock instead of six.
Suggestion.
Hey, um, I didn't have any scheduled meetings the last couple of weeks, so I have nothing to report.
All right.
Except for, make sure you talk about the bike park.
Okay.[1787.25]
Okay.
Think, because I wasn't physically there.
Okay, I'm gonna, since you called the mayor out on that, I'm gonna defer to her on that, I was gonna talk about it, but...
Or you can.
No, I want, no, I wanna defer to the mayor on that. Um, if you'll notice, we've done a lot of work on the, on the pickleball, uh, court site, um, and, um, we've relocated the water line that was gonna be a conflict and, um, um, have been moving dirt. We have to basically shift the county's parking lot. We had to remove all of the road base, shifting and reshaping that so that we can restore their parking lot and really carve out the space that we're going to have the pickleball courts on, um...
Excuse me, Dan, are you going clear up to the county-city boundary now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have a...
It was almost reclaiming because the parking was a little over onto ours and so we had to kinda pull it back just a little bit, at least the contour.
The contours followed basically the old racetrack and then they kind of adapted that into where they put the old Paragona Highway thing and all of that. So, um, it was kinda confusing where the city property started, and the city property started in that parking lot quite a ways. So, we've been reclaiming is an interesting word, but, but definitely reshaping that, getting it ready so that we have it at rough grade so we can update our, our plan with, with actual elevations and then we can get, go out to bid for, for concrete. So, that's coming really soon. Um, uh, the bridge, um, the, UDOT and, uh, the federal process has quite a process for selecting an engineer. I'm, I'm happy to say that is, they've finally finished that. There is a, I have one more meeting on that, but the, the firm has been selected that will receive the award to design the bridge, and that is Jacobs Engineering Group. UDOT has a ve- has a very specific policy that they have to go through and score everything. Um, there's a moment of darkness where nobody, I'm not allowed to talk to any engineers, they can't talk to me, they can't talk to anybody from the city. They, they have a, a separate project manager that's in charge of the process of selecting the group and, and there's committee members put on. I was one of like six. Most of them were UDOT employees from different parts of the state and they go through a really rigorous process to score all of everything. We have interviews with all of the firms and once all the scores are, a- after there's clarification on it, we can talk amongst ourselves and say, "I felt this, I felt that, these were things that I noticed." We update our scores and then the highest scoring, um, group is selected. And in this case, that was Jacobs Engineering Group. They had a lot of experience in dealing with bridge structure design, in dealing with right-of-way clearances, in dealing with hydraulics and, um, things that are gonna have to be dealt with, with the, with the, the channel. Um, that, since this is a state project, they're gonna have to clear everything like, like kinda like the federal government does on, on the NEPA process, there'll be like the state version of that. This group has experience in that. And, oh, there was one other criteria that they scored high in. So, looks like we'll be dealing with Jacobs Engineering Group, that will be officially awarded to them, um, after an, after meeting, meeting, and, and then that'll be awarded to them. Um, it has been pretty rigorous. Um, in that last meeting, I was made aware that our project manager that UDOT, UDOT had assigned to the project, Ruston Anderson, is moving on. He's actually leaving his capacity and moving to, I think they said he was gonna go work for Sunrise Engineering or something like that. They, UDOT has assigned a new project manager, his name is Taylor Ricks. Um, I received an email from him today, copied on with, um, UDOT. So, we'll have a new project manager, which will get back involved now that the selection process is done and will continue moving forward. But, next steps, um, we, we highlighted in the RFP, a fairly aggressive timeline. This is gonna sound laughable, but the aggressive timeline is, the design of the bridge starts now in hoping that we can actually construct it next winter. Not this upcoming winter, but next winter.
Winter twenty-five.
And, most of the, the engineering firms that we talked to and everything says, "Wow, why so aggressive on the timeline?" Um, by the time you have to do everything you have to do with all the clearances, not to mention the lead time of getting materials, um, getting the bidding done and all of that stuff, there's, oh, that's the, that was the other big factor of the thing is all of the, the utility conflicts that we're gonna have to deal with from an engineering standpoint are gonna be pretty significant. Anyways, so, w- we'll get them on board and we'll start the process and start, um, they will, th- most of them presented a, a project management timeline that showed all of the things that have to happen and what things in what order, if you're familiar with project management. It's actually a pretty aggressive timeline because it means that we go out to bid by le- by next summer. I think like they wanna be, go out to bid the construction end of it, like next June, May, June, July, in order to actually get the person selected, then they can order all of the materials and actually build this thing next winter. We wanna build it in the winter when there's low water and, and so forth. And of course, we have to get our other water diversion project done this winter in order to hit that timeline to do that next winter. So, there's a lot of time and a lot of work, most of it will be happening in the background. We will, um, have public updates, um, as we have things to share. When they come up with their, y- when they design, they'll do a, they'll do a ten percent design and a thirty percent design. Usually, I think it's the thirty percent design, they actually designed three different bridges so that they can make sure they're fully looking at all the possibilities and then they'll narrow it down. We'll have some public, um, process and input and presentations, um, as we move along. So, just exciting to have that.
Question, Dan, on the bridge. Just for my curiosity, why is UDOT so heavily involved? It's, I've always had this question when that isn't the UDOT road.
Cause we can't go after the federal joint highways money without, it has to be UDOT-sponsored.
Cause that isn't the county, I mean, UDOT's jurisdiction ends at two hundred south.
Yeah, this is what's called an off-system bridge. So, it is not in UDOT's system, but it is a part, the reason why UDOT sponsored us and federal highways won't deal with the local government, they'll deal with UDOT. Um, but the reason UDOT fought for this bridge and was willing to put it on and go to bat for us to get the five million w- we got in rev- money is because this is the, the bypass if the freeway shuts down.
Right, yeah.
But if, this is what I say when I say free money isn't free and when you get federal money, it's not free. Not only is there match requirements, there is part of your soul that you have to sell to go through the red tape. It is a lot of work, which there's no way we, we go through this. Well, there is, we just build a bridge that isn't gonna be, you know, we'd have a hard time affording and we wouldn't be able to get this level of engineering on and so forth.
Well, we have another Ford.
Yeah, we could put in another Ford and put some turnstiles in to shut it down. So, that's the update on the bridge. Um, I, I mentioned earlier Maverick Annexation, um, this is a perfect example of the process. Um, it, there are certain timelines that the city has to do on the front end and with noticing and things like that. Um, we have been hung up on the annexation agreement, um, and it really isn't, it's been us, it's been, um, between two of the applicants. And, um, they ha- they've now got that resolved and it looks like the, Maverick has requested they do it simultaneous with the closing on the property and they've requested that we put it on the agenda, um, at, at the end of July, probably the second meeting of July. And, um, and it looks like everything has been resolved there. Um, there was some question, we, we're basically making them spend a lot of money to extend the utilities across the freeway and there was a question of fairness of who has to pay what and things like that. W- we're getting all those, all those things resolved now. So, there's been a lot of rumors that they got cold feet or were pulling out. No, it's just a matter of getting it all figured out. You're dealing with a corporation that has it, all of its upper management and, and its processes and things like that. But, um, it looks like that'll come to a vote, cause we came, we had the public hearings, we, we had a positive recommendation for Planning Commission after its public hearing and it got to the point, we were ready to have your vote, but we needed the annexation agreement signed and that's where we got hung up. So, looks like it'll come to your vote and I will have a copy of the annexation agreement that's signed before we do that, so you can review it. Nothing has changed materially from what we've already talked about, but it looks like that's finally, that water is gonna make it all the way to the end of the row now, finally, in the end of July. Library, new hire, we hired a part-time employee for the library. Um, as you know, that we had, we were on limited hours for, um, uh, for a time as we dealt with, um, our, our staffing issue, this is well-publicized, what, what we were going through. We got a, a part-time person to fill some of those daytimes that our normal full-time person, um, our, our library director always did. And, um, good news, um, we, she will be coming back in light duty. We also have a part-time person, so we're moving back to regular hours there, posted on the library door. And, um, we're just, things look like, um, we're just really pleased, not only that things are progressing from our library director who we care for much, but also we got a good part-time hire. And, um, we didn't really ever have any coverage if our library director was gone during certain days during the day. And so, now with our part-time hire, we do. Ultimately, we'll just assign hours according to our budget, but if we need to plug a hole rather than shutting the library on a certain day, we can, we can bring this person in. So, things are progressing there. I wanna say, I want to express my thanks. Um, we had some citizens, um, some of their, in the, in the audience and, um, with Jett, um, our, um, you guys know Jett Smith, um, organized and got together and we had people come out that had abilities and they jumped in, they really wanted, we were, we were in the middle of still very slowly restoring the drywall that we had to tear out to replace the plumbing and updating the water heater and tile and we had a bunch of stuff, fixtures that had to be put in. They said, "We don't want our library director to come back to a library that's still in construction process." And so, they jumped in, dedicated some days, different craftsmen, and have buttoned that place up and did a lot of work. And I just wanted to express my thanks to those that have done that, um...
Who's the new hire?
The name is slipping my mind, do you remember?
Alyssa Franklin.
Alyssa Franklin.
Alyssa.
And if you recognize the last name, it's cause it's Jeremy's daughter. She described herself as a, I don't know if I'm right for this position, I'm a bit of a nerd and I was like...
She's a nerd.
That's exactly who you want in a library and they love her, she's worked, she's working out good.
I could've rescued you, but I was waiting to see if you remembered who, her name. (laughing).
I'm so bad with names. Just throw the rope, I'm, I'm gonna drown if you let me. I'm sure there's more, but that's all that's coming to mind.
Um, so, I don't know if I'm the only person who received this email, it came today. It was from the, it was from Cameron Cowan from IPA. So, many months ago, which now seems like a lifetime, which really wasn't that long ago, we had a special meeting where we wrote a letter and asked Governor Cox to veto the bill that would, uh, change the whole situation of decommissioning, the, commissioning the coal plant. It was a pretty big deal.
We got it.
We, we got the considerations, so that meeting is going, do you wanna talk about it? Since your power, or do...
Me too, real quick, I'll just read it with...
Well, the meeting, I have it in front of me if you wanna, uh, but the meeting is coming up, so, it says that if we wanna participate, we could be on that by, via Zoom.
Yeah.
So, I just thought that was good to see results of that and that we got the consideration. The meeting's gonna be held on the seventeenth of June at two thirty PM. Yes, and so, that's when they'll come together with the, those legislative people and they'll talk about this and so...
Progress. Just for the residents to know that IPP is the, is the power in Delta that we get some of the power from and they're changing it over from coal to natural gas and that. And the state, if I'm not, David, the state took part of that, right? Cause, and it was like the last ten minutes of the legislature, they created this bill and passed it. And UAM had twenty-seven cities write a letter to the governor to video, veto it. And he did not, he passed it and he said they would make a special legislate to go over it to see what to do. So, this is what this meeting's about, is what they're going to do now.
All right, and the next one is I went to the commission meeting, um, it was on Monday, the county commissioners' meeting, and they have now mapped on the commission, on the Iron County website, you can see it, it's all the livestock trails. And the reason that's so significant is we have those historic livestock trails going through Parowan and they talked to the commissioners in Washington, they'd never done that before and it's really starting to cause a lot of problems to not have that mapped in, in the public and part of, you know, the information that is conveyed when people buy property because they can fence their property in if they'd like to, but if they don't and it's a historic livestock trail and livestock tramples something or eats something or destroys something, it's, it's part of being on a historic livestock trail. Uh, the other part of it that I thought was really interesting, just as a point of, of my education, is if you hit a cow and you call and you hit a cow and it damaged your car, if it, you're on a historic livestock trail, you're gonna be paying for a cow and you've just turned yourself in. (laughing) I thought that was interesting. So, if you wanna see those maps, and as far as I know, we're the only county that's taken the time to GIS those, you can go to the county website and look at those historic livestock trails and I think it was really cool. They had quite a few representatives from, um, from our cattleman here in Parowan and it was a, a very well-attended meeting and a, a lot of, uh, good feedback there and, and very supportive of that effort because it was a tremendous effort to get that as part of our documentation and actually legally in place for the future. Um, the other thing is the, um, I guess I'm talking about the bike park, so I just, big shout-out, I keep trying to figure out what we can do for him, but Mayor Robinson of Paragona, he actually scaled our bike park plans, which were the Saint George Bike Park plans to fit our parcel. He did all of the right, um, calculations to get the physics right on the pump track and the different, I call them whoop-de-woos or whatever, you just have to have it right and he did that for us. And so, he got those done and we had, um, we had a competition in the elementary school to design a bike park logo and name and we probably had close to, I keep thinking twenty-five to thirty, I didn't ever count them, um, I appreciate, yeah, it was quite a few and they were really good. And this is a really neat project because Public Works is actually, um, it was their idea to do this park, they're, they're planning in part, uh, in it and they wanted to let this run through the school to let the kids name it. Um, that was their idea as well and they went through all the entries and they picked, um, Tucker Johnson and he was the winner and he named the bike park Evil Water Bike Park. Imagine that. So, our trail system is called Evil Water Trail System and this will tie into our Evil Water Trail System. It really is gonna be neat, it's a skills training park and we'll have a shaded pavilion area with seating for parents or whoever to watch and, um, it's gonna be a great amenity just across from the parking lot at the, um, sports complex. And Tucker was just great, I mean, you know where there's just those perfect things that that kids say. He just with a little bit of a frog in his throat said, "Um, thank you, I, I love my bike" and it was just so sweet and I was great, really grateful for Parowan Bike Shop to donate the bike and it was just a really good experience to be able to have Public Works announce that and choose that winner.
Do you think, um, when school gets back in, because I have kids around town asking me, like, "Who won all this?" I'm wondering if they could come, like, on a Friday assembly that we do, um, and just do that again.
Make a big deal out of it.
Yeah, make a big deal out of it and just thank everybody and, because those kids were so excited.
Yeah.
And it was just, and when he turned that entry into me, he's like, "Now, do you take that to the mayor?" And I was like, "Yes, I will personally take that to the mayor." But, they were just so excited and I'm just so excited that they included the community children in it because, I don't know, I'm partial, I love school kids.
Um, and this is just a feel-good that I wanted to read it to everyone. I got a letter from, um, Emily Van Len and she does the Senior Care Volunteer AmeriCorps program here in Parowan. It says, "Hello, I wanted to let you know, I will be honoring two outstanding AmeriCorps senior Parowan volunteers on the eighteenth. Norma Baker has dedicated twenty-five years as a senior companion in Parowan, sharing her love and commitment with many residents. Barbara Witten, who has served for ten years, was inspired to join after Norma cared for her mother. After her mother passed, Barbara wanted to offer the same friendship and companionship to others that she received from Norma. Both women have devoted countless hours, often going above and beyond in emergencies without tracking the extra time. They've recruited other volunteers and continue to give back to the community of Parowan and Paragona in numerous ways. In the five counties area, we have eleven foster grandparents and sixteen senior companions, including four in Parowan. Uh, we are deeply grateful for each volunteer and the time they give their clients and residents. I see firsthand the blessings they bring to the clients and their families. I would like to send a letter or gift of appreciation for Norma and I would be delighted to present it to her on the eighteenth." So, I'm writing a letter to include in that if anyone else would like to include a letter or a thank you card, I think that would be appropriate, but I just wanted to, uh, read that letter because I thought it was really, really nice. And then I did attend the Patrick Byway meeting today, it was in Bryan Head, we have the interpretive kiosks, um, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, telling the fire story as well as, uh, laying out new trail maps and things along the way between here and Panguich. Uh, but one of the things that Nancy Dalton talked about, which I thought was really neat, is, um, in twenty-twenty-six, it'll be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth year birthday of the United States and she wanted to propose to me that we would move the Mount Messier Monument, um, and... And she wanted to propose to me that we would move the Mount Messier monument, um, and have that music played, maybe by an orchestra or something to do some kind of celebratory event. And she said she was gonna come to council meeting tonight, but she saw our agenda and decided to not even come for public comment, cause she saw it was a big meeting. So she said she'd come to our first meeting to talk to us about that in July and also give us an update on the, uh, scenic byway and how that project's going. And that is all I have. So, do we have anything from Planning Commission? Do we have anything from staff? Do we have anything from legal? Alright. Alright, and with that, I would like to call for a closed session. And it will be to discuss, um, security measures as well as, um, yeah, deployment of security personnel devices or system, and, systems and also, no, I'm not seeing, the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. So I would entertain a motion to go into closed session by roll call vote.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I move that we move into closed session to.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah, good night. I move that we move into closed session to discuss, oh, including discussion regarding deployment of security personnel, devices or systems, charity sessions, discuss the purchase exchange, lease, sell, real property litigation, the character, professional competence or physical mental health of an individual and for attorney-client communications or for any other lawful purpose. One second.
Hold a second. Do we, do we do roll call for closed?
Rochelle Topham, aye.
Dave Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Thank you.
Hallie? Are you just gonna bring those in to us?
Yeah, let's sign them here.
She is, but unless she wanna buy her couch. Everything is gone.
I wonder if this is gonna be done tomorrow?
I'm taking tomorrow off.
Okay, well, I'll get you the part of the, I got you online.
Alright.
Yes, I did come through there, but I did remember and I did want you to think that I saw.
That's a very quick question?
Yeah.